State of the United States of America, to the Republic, which is seen one nation under individual, and we need justice for all.
Well, I just look at the agenda, any additions, corrections, or conflicts? Not the agenda is approved, move on to the reading in minutes.
October seventh, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Supervisors met at nine A.M. With Dave Mulbauer, Chair Presiding, Members President Schultz, Mulbauer, Hyden, and Rossburg, Member Axon, Dozar, meetings of the previous meeting were read and approved. The Board approved change of status of Parker from full-time to PRN, Health and Hospitals. Janet Blossom crosswords at Crawford County, gave the Board an update on their services. Motion was made by Schultz and Hyden, with the following resolution. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-six. Resolution to pay back interfund operating loan in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents. It'll be from Fund Forty, which is Hickam's family planning, to the General Basic Fund of zero 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 five. Seeing voting I Schultz, Mulbauer, Hyden, and Rossburg, which in past two weeks. A motion was made by second by Schultz from resolution twenty-five dash thirty-seven. Resolution transferring funds in the amount of seven thousand dollars from self-insurance fund eighty-five hundred into the Wellness Fund Forty to voting I Schultz, Mulbauer, Hyden, and Rossburg. Rossburg, motion passed unanimously. The Board had a discussion about tax abatement on parcel one-three-one-three-two-six-zero-zero-three, purchased by Crawford County in June twenty-four-five. No action was taken at this time. Motion was made by Hyden, second by Schultz, to approve the following resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight. Resolution transferring funds in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from General Basic into the General Supplemental Fund. Voting I Schultz, Mulbauer, Hyden, and Rossburg. Motion passed unanimously. Board had a discussion about camera inspection of the plumbing at the CCCS building and the first floor of the courthouse. At eleven-twelve A.M., a motion was made by Schultz, second by Rossburg, to open the session pursuant to Iowa Board Twenty-one point five, subsection one, subsection C, which allows for a closed session. Motion passed unanimously. At eleven-forty-five, a motion was made by Schultz, second by Hyden, to close, close session. Motion passed unanimously. On motion due the second of order during the eleven-thirty-six A.M. Agenda's through the next meeting, opposed and available at the courthouse on Friday four.
Ryan updating on, you know, where he is at. We talked a little bit about the communication between the departments and he has a new system where you have a, what do they call it, a work order? And it was decided that when he replies back to them, where the status of it wasn't actually going through, so there were some adjustments that needed to be made, but should we?
For the people that call in for the report, they're going to issue when it's done.
Right, right. Or how it's progressing.
Right.
Yeah, we weren't getting that before. No one knew.
New work.
Or how do you see your old work orders? How do you know? How do you try to remember what you entered into this stuff?
And that was, that was the concern. Public health was waiting for something and it put their work order in, had not heard anything back. And here it was on backorder and the memo was right there, it just wasn't getting back. So that wasn't good.
He just needed to tweak some settings within his process.
Talked a little bit about hours, you know, how he's tracking his hours, what's expected on that. So I think we got resolve on that also. He's keeping a timesheet similar to what Dylan is keeping over in the city of Carroll to, or the county.
But we need to figure out if that's what.
Sufficient for us or not?
Yes, what is acceptable for this county to do?
Well.
Because it's not typical.
Yeah, and it's.
And we don't want to end up, sorry for interrupting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We don't want to end up in a situation where we're paying out a vacation payout at a retirement that is excessive and not properly documented.
So if you take a vacation, you know.
Which has happened in the past.
You get a bank a vacation, but you don't get that until the second year.
Or is it?
Yeah, I, yes, no, you're right.
So that's why you have to drag.
Yes.
So I think the thing that, you know, a forty-hour vacation, when you only have five days of personal time to take in that first year, or how that ever, there's that trouble.
Should we have the same moving documentation for Ben, for Paul, for all people that do the same thing?
It'd be nice.
Yeah, it would be nice with him.
That's not what we have currently.
Okay. Needs to be something.
And nobody really knew.
Yeah.
How he was hired, how that was put together when he was hired, what was, what was communicated to him.
I guess that is something.
You know what I mean? How, yeah, and maybe that would have been nice to have a contract that actually spelled it out.
And we know how Jake did it, and that, that's kind of, I think, what the expectation possibly was, is that he would continue the way that Jake did, and Jake would always, you know, let them know when he was going to be out of the office and different things like that. So that goes back to that communication piece of that.
Yeah, because that week's vacation, how was that supposed to have been handled?
Yeah.
I know how it was handled, but how was it supposed to have been handled? Was he to use all of that new personal time? Except for when he actually worked? Or, I guess he did do some work on vacation. Was that the expectation? You know what, I don't know, I don't know the answers, because I wasn't involved in the conversation, so.
Well, that on H R, you know, how that goes for the new hires, and there, you know, the dynamics of elected official doesn't fit, it's not the same way with an elected official and a department head, has a different expectation of tracking time is why she take.
There's a lot of Paul's stuff, or past, and Eric Paul, there's a lot of his stuff in the contract, wasn't it?
I believe so.
Yeah, and so, I mean, on a playing field, I mean, IT director is at the same, you know, their department is, you know, and I don't know, I suspect, like the assessor would be a similar type contract, obviously have to have the approval of the conference.
Right.
But I think that it would be something, that's actually a very important thing, we should probably be mapping out for future, for sure. And even what the people would presently have, we need to map out some clear lines so nobody's confused, thinking they can do something, or should be doing something they don't.
And that's, that's part of it, you know, vacations, vacation time versus, I came in at six o'clock this morning to get a bunch of stuff done before everybody got there, and so then I went home at three o'clock. That's just balancing out your hours, it's not comp time, it's not, you know, it's just making sure you get those forty hours in, and the communication of coming in early, which is, is absolutely acceptable, because you have to run things before we open up and everybody's trying to use the computer, so that's perfect, but we certainly don't expect you to come in at six and then stay till four-thirty. If that's supposed to be that balancing of a exempt salary person.
I'm sorry, but when I say exempt salary, that's like me on my truck, right? You know, you're running the show, and not owning it, but you're running the show. There's no boss in America that thinks that he works forty hours working, and has a successful business, see what I'm saying? And so, I mean, you, you can work it out, but in an IT job, and Paul's was a lot like that, now he had more staff, and, and the assessor was kind of the same, you, you, you need to be there when operations are happening in, within your entity, especially when you're in a job that's critical to the entirety of the courthouse. I mean, one computer goes down, you know, it, it gets a backup somewhere or wherever. I mean, I think that that's, I don't expect him to, to be here ten hours to every day, you know? But, boy, I mean, you, you, I'm, I'm using, I'm, my mind's going through Cory, I mean, I've had a few calls, and you guys have been dealing with it, so I mean, I, I have, I've stayed in my lane so speed, but, I mean, I've had some calls and I said that, you know, it's new, we're working things out, there's a lot to be done, you know, that we're doing. So I mean, there's going to be steps, but I think that, you know, now Cory had more than just him, he had his whole thing company, but, I mean, you guys, it was an instant, instantaneous response, now with one person, that's going to be impossible to always be instantaneous.
Right.
However, we can't let the mission be impeded during the middle of the workday, especially like at the noon hours, I mean, so if you're one of them jobs, you know, I can run that department over there, but I know there's a lot of people that need to go through the treasurer's office every day of the week, and the recorder's has their time, and they're obviously busy at lunchtime, because somebody's run over from farmland to get a hunt license or something for their forward, or whatever the case may be. So then were the times that we really can't afford to have a computer go down, so we kind of need him readily available, take your lunch at one, or, you know, if you come in a little bit later in the morning, morning's probably tough, he maybe could leave a little earlier at the end of the day, or, he's going to have to fill it out.
And that's, yeah, yeah, that's kind of that communication part of that, and how, but I think the, the overlaying issue would be that vacation time, how is that banked up for him at, in human resources at this time? Was he given?
He was given the new personal, the five ring personal days, so forty hours, that's what he was given.
So.
But that vacation only used eight of those total.
But got paid a full paycheck.
Yes.
That is kind of what, how this conversation started, and I don't know if we have the answer to that at this point in time.
So do we want to have a committee, or do we want to put a person in charge of that, to contact maybe Chelsea and get a contract drawn up that would be something we could use for each of the people, for people like Ben, for Paul, for Ryan, all people that fall into that umbrella, that they're all treated exactly the same, so they all know, all are aware, moving forward?
I will call Chelsea and explain kind of.
Ben already has the contract.
Well, let's use that contract for Ben then, as something that we already have in place, see how similar we can make it for each of the other.
Get everybody the same.
Okay.
And make sure that it meets all the requirements that, that we really think it needs to, and nothing gets missed, because Ben still has a little bit of a different role than IT or the assessor's office. I mean, and the assessor's office always approved of the conference board, but I think it behooves us to have, everything is consistently operating across the court.
The first five pages of the counter, they shouldn't, you know, they'll read the same, you know, or sixth page might spell lots of specifics.
Specific, yeah, definitely, definitely.
So I think what we have one, should be able to mirror.
Especially on off-duty time and stuff like that, yeah, comp time, I mean.
For comp time, no, for comp.
Because they don't really get a comp time, because they're.
I know, they, they don't get comp time, but Paul always kept track of that.
Right.
To justify, in case somebody said, why are you taking Friday off? Well, it was because of the snowstorm on Tuesday, and I came at five.
Yeah.
And I stayed till seven at night, or something, you know?
And I think that the big question is that vacation time, when you're completely off the clock, you're not available, how is that tracked? How much time you've used and how much time you actually get as a.
Right.
That's, that is kind of an area that I know the previous assessors did not keep track of it, but, yep, at the end, they still had four weeks of vacation to take, and so you kind of have to figure out, well, how are we keeping track of that in, I don't know.
Right, and how do you keep track of, if I am on vacation?
Right.
I'm the IT guy.
Right.
And I'm in Blue Falls, Minnesota, out on a boat, and I get a, my text message or something from the home office, I get an email, and it's like an emergency, it's something I gotta go back, so I go back and I work for two hours to get it done while I'm on vacation. What, what, what happens to those two hours? Such as, I lost it in vacation?
Yep.
Do I add it on the next week?
Right, but don't we have a backup plan to avoid those things?
That.
In IT, we have a backup plan.
We do, and everybody deserves to be able to unwind and not have to be on call, you know, you, you just need to set some time aside, and how, how many, how many blocks of time do we allow?
I understand, I have twenty-eighteen with Carol.
Yeah, so that would be when you're, you're out of the office, you know, let's say it's a rare occasion that Carol can't fix it, they need to give you a call, you know, just keep track of it, come in a little bit later someday to make up for the time you lost on vacation. We all go on vacation, but we still don't forget our real lives, you know, take a walk for ourselves.
We tried to.
We. It doesn't happen like that, so the conversation was very positive.
Good.
Good. Yes, I think he.
Thanks, Jan, for taking the lead with the Ford, let's come up with and talk to Justin.
Okay, I will let you know, I will let you know. And then I did leave several messages for Kate Lynch to stop in and visit with us about how mental health is going in Crawford County, hasn't returned that call yet, but I'm going to see if we can get her on for next Tuesday and come in and let us know how the transition is going, and how things in Crawford County look with mental health, and see if we possibly get one of her bosses to come in and talk with her, and let us know what their concerns are, and keep going on that. Seems like I did do it, but I just can't seem to pick up.
Okay.
Everything's.
All right, Ty?
Well, hello.
You're up.
Uh, let's see, I think I really had a whole lot of. Uh, NACO, had some military and veteran affairs. Let's see. And. I get to find out my new times for rack meetings, I changed that, and I, I've got scheduled in on days they aren't. Kind of a pain. I did have some calls, and that was one of them that I had over the last week, and then some other people had brought up the IT stuff, you know? Wondered, you know, why it was harder to find him, or something, I mean, Jake was, Jake was pretty good at hiring, he has a little closet, but, you know, I mean, it was easy to find, but sometimes there'd be one or so, I mean, you guys take care of that, so I just, I don't think that's anything, I'm, I'm, I'm sure not going to swim in your lane, hopefully that's all getting taken care of. It's like I explained, I said, there's always new, there's always some hiccups that I need to do.
Right.
I've had some different conversations on some road stuff for in the future, I mean, people are asking me about different things, and I actually was talking with Paul yesterday, he was down helping Rhimer's Cowaline, and he was watching the Deloitte Boulevard, he said, you know, I live on that, I always knew it had some traffic, but he says, sitting here all day watching the traffic go by on that road, he said, I don't think there, you know, I, I think it's busier than thirty-nine some of the time, especially going to school and leaving school, at that times during the day, that road is blocked.
True.
And it, and Kirk Rocker keeps me used to, and I haven't heard him for in a while on that road, but he used to keep me pretty updated, that road junk, get these fixed, you need to do something more permanent with that, you know, that was always his contention on that road, and that one there, I think, after this Iowa State study's done, and like, maybe next year or something, that has got to be a prime candidate for our subgrade stabilization.
How much, I wonder how much like heavy traffic and stuff, right?
You know, and that was what we talked about, there's the school buses, and if you look at like our road that goes up to my place over Charter Oak, where the school buses stop, the road gets better.
Correct.
So buses, you know, we, we don't like to think of them as heavy traffic, but they're hard on roads, they are.
Yeah.
They do a lot of bouncing and stuff, and I think that.
That's just been, no, I mean, that, there's been no subgrade stabilization ever on that, it's been oiled and oiled and oiled.
It's been oiled.
So I mean, you're just dealing with a good fight, which obviously would not be the answer for that, but, but a, a subgrade stabilization of a yellow smoke road where you're not going to full twelve, but an eight would be probably suffice.
If we did.
And keep it oiled or seal coated and.
That's what my question, if we did upgrade that, how much would that increase that traffic? You know, just imagine like our trucks not having to go past and follow the pass, and taking rock up to Cairo area, or, you know, over to Sluggly, thirty-nine over or something like that, they might spare use it instead of driving through town.
Yeah, I would, we could probably control our.
But then like Pony Hill coming in and out, stuff like that.
That's why I wonder, you know, traffic study, we'd have to ask Bennett, but I think it can potentially with their markers, and all the most precise of what's, of the, the type of the, type of vehicle that's going over it, because the way it counts. I mean, if someone that lives, lives on that road, and other than buses, I don't see a lot of heavy duty traffic.
There's not a lot.
As far as semis, tractors.
Really don't need, I don't see a lot of that. Other than the rock plant, trucks coming in and out of there, I don't know that there's any industry that would be going in and out of that road, but would that increase if we made that road more passable?
Right, yeah, there's no doubt you're right, school time, morning, afternoons, it's.
And considering it's school, you know, you really want a good road for that, you know, obviously.
You say it's in time versus coming through town, coming up the back way to get to school.
Yeah, keeps you, it's a lot quicker route, especially to like the junior, well, both junior high and high school. I don't like, that was, that was the conversation that I just had, that I thought, boy, we need to get that, and it's already on Ben's radar, because I've talked to him about it too already. I don't know, I just think that might be a road, whether we went ten or twelve or whatever we went, you know?
They have to decide.
But I think, but here was something that I brought up to Paul yesterday, I asked him, because I, I don't know what we pay on average, what our white, our load of white rock is, if we have to have that, now we got a bunch of new rock there, which is why Ben said, this might be an advantageous time to do that, because of all that rock that this Iowa State University paid to put on there for their test. But I was talking about what I used in my lot, when I built my new truck shop, I used that slag from Chows, and I used the bigger stuff initially, and man, does that make a base, and unlike limestone, it don't, it don't dissolve or crush up, I mean, it's stable. But in fact, for a while, you couldn't get it, because the railroad was using it after all the floods out of Nebraska, you remember that? And I think they typically, there must be, I think it's out in Norfolk, where one of their boundaries is, maybe something over, or over that side, Burlington or something, and I think they would typically bring loads of rock or slag back, and so if you got that and the cost is similar, you know, for just, I think it'd be something to keep in mind, maybe we could mix that stuff in too, create a really solid base, because Kyle's, Kyle can attest to it, I built a lake there on rainy years, and it's there all year, and it's, it's concrete solid on my parking lot all the time, my trucks never get stuck, while they get stuck on ice, but they don't get stuck in the mud, I mean, it really works well, so it's just something to think about, and I brought that up, that's kind of the stuff that I've been dealing with this weekend, had a few questions on, oh, you know, obviously the never-ending questions about pipeline stuff, but, you know, I'm sure we'll get into them again in discussions a little later, but.
Did they do a counter, a truck, a traffic counter on that, that road, Iowa State?
Yeah, well, we do them every ten years.
Also, they always do them north of where the actual traffic is.
Okay, because I was saying.
I was asking, I said, I don't know if our, our traffic count on that road is all that accurate, because where they set up a lot of times is further, like where that.
Why?
That makes sense.
That tore it up, I don't hear that, and, and he said, so I don't know how accurate the traffic count is on there, but, like he said, I mean, he lives on that road, it shocked him, he said, but he's at work all day, he don't see what's going on during the day, you know, but when you really get to see how much traffic there is on that road, and I've had people tell me, like I said, Kirk Rocker's pointed it out to me multiple times, that road needs help, so I mean, I think that needs to be a road that's on our, especially with the kids using it and the buses.
Right.
Like, you know, I mean, we haven't had anybody, but you know, you get, you're both country boys, and you get the car going, when you get on them washboards, and that road's always a washboard, you could do laundry on that road, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's rough enough, them kids in the winter time, or any time, you know, if it get going like that and end up in a ditch or something, because they lost control or whatever, I mean, that would be good, so I mean, it's just, just things to think about, I mean, that was something that I thought, yeah, maybe you get the whole board's attention to thinking about that road again, just something to keep an eye on, I mean, there's other roads in the whole county that need some attention, I mean, we know that, but, but I just thought I'd bring that up to you, and we had a discussion this weekend.
So Kyle, with your, your history, those counters can actually count the type of vehicle? Yeah, the type, I don't know if they can determine weight, I don't know that, but they can do type, just about fast, the. The front tires and the back tires. Somehow monitors, I, I, I believe this to be correct.
Okay.
If you, you know, tampons.
I'd love to do that.
Real quick, or is, that's a car or something, you know, so.
How hard would it be for us to get a, to see that traffic count that they did?
Ben's got it.
Ben's got it?
Yeah, he's got, they got, he's got.
Just curious.
A dollar with the traffic count of every road in this.
I'd be curious what the number is, you know, you know what I'm saying, if it's, I'd just be curious, how many, how many days.
You can ask Ben when he comes up.
There we go.
I think a state, I mean, there might even be a, like a state level map that shows a whole, whole state traffic count.
Sure.
And I think I read one where. Somebody gave me one, one time at elections.
Okay.
During all my first election or something, that, so I knew where the best places were to put signs, I mean, so there, it's, it's publicly available.
I think I read that there are thirteen thousand five hundred crossings of railroad tracks in Crawford County every single day.
I, wow, but that's count people that run to town, because there just needs, they don't have to go back, don't have to go back, that really does that. Same. No.
And Trent, well, we, we discussed the military and veteran fair, obviously November eleventh coming up, and that's on a Tuesday, so I graciously. Guy asked if I would do a speech at one of our schools, and I said, well, it's supervised for things, so I'm actually kind of committed, all right, thank you for asking.
We're going to move our meeting.
Yeah, we're closed that day, actually, the courthouse is.
Thank you.
So get your speech back.
It's right.
Get to right?
What's that?
Get to right?
Get to right, I, I probably. But I gotta see, I probably already got some.
All the day.
Uh, I forgot about that being a courthouse closed.
Excellent point.
Uh, what counties need, anyway, Operation Green Light, I mean, I was, I was thinking about that when I drove through a Kansas community that had their courthouse, and they must have some lights that like, just say under your, your wells and stuff, that they change different colors.
Always.
Because I went through there, I remember one time when it was green, because it's more than just that day you put the green light up, it's, you know, what, week, two weeks or something like that.
Two weeks.
Yeah, they have your green light out, but that courthouse was green for that, but then, like law enforcement, and then even fire days, it's, it's been different colors on different, like red, white, blue, and fourth holidays, American, you know, whether it's Memorial Day, Fourth of July, or things like that.
Coming out of Omaha, it advertised with that, but I'm here.
I just wonder how much one of them.
Louise has done a little study on that, because remember when she was going, she had thought about that that would be really cool, and she could really have the funds to.
Cost was pretty high, I think.
Yeah. Right, well, for the product that was being.
Right, right. Yeah, that was going to be the beauty of it, it could be green, it could be red, white, blue, it could be white, it could be red, you know, so, and she.
Wonder if there's just always, you never know, there might be grants available or something, should keep our eye out for that, that would be neat to be able to do.
That would be really, this courthouse.
Maybe you just save a few pennies at a time and find out, yeah, it's, it's a fifteen thousand dollar project, let's see what we, that'd be kind of neat to, because you know, you can see our courthouse when you're coming down fifty-nine, you know, if this thing was sitting up here all red, white, blue, or green, or whatever the case may, well, that'd be, that'd be short.
It would look very cool. Plus Louise says it's still.
Is the average traffic count.
Oh.
Vehicles per day.
Per day?
Paul, if that's a little light, because they would have done that during the summer when schools not in session.
Yeah, when they usually hire college kids to come do it.
You know, which would probably make sense.
How'd you find this fast text then?
He's got that. Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this might sell like, so if the traffic counter is placed here, it gets it going this way and this way, so it's coming and going. If I went to work, then I went home, that's two people.
That's too bad.
Anyway, there's a, there's also, there was also a discussion of what this government shutdown could create for the military and VA services and that type of stuff. Medical stuff for VA is going to happen no matter what. The discussion was actually there that Trump can do what he has to, to move money around, just like when you get your budget from us. You, you have to move stuff around to make things happen that have to happen. There's elections, something or whatever, you know, and. There's ways to make it work. Obviously, they always exacerbate their immediate concerns for TV audiences from Washington, you know. Uh, so, I mean, I, I remember even when, when I was in the service and Terry, you probably remember too. Times where we were having a shutdown, I never got worried about it. I was gonna eat, you know, we were gonna do our job no matter what. You know, I mean, they were gonna figure it out. That's their job to worry about that. So they act like our troops are out there having. You know, conniption fix, they're not getting paid. I will tell you wives are probably worried because if that paycheck don't show up, the bills don't get paid. But there are actually contingencies and hopefully the troops are making sure your wives know who to get a hold of. To help you get to where you don't incur late fees or, you know, charges, you know, you, you got to plan for that. And whenever you got the government talking about, I do remember we would always discuss. Hey, the government may have a shutdown, make sure you get a hold of your bankers and let them know. We'll get back pay. You're gonna get your pay, but you don't want your pay to have to have new bills of late fees and overdraft charges and all that stuff. Oh, we all know that can head up pretty quick. For all the young ones and most of your soldiers out there, not all of them, but the majority of them are young guys that. New wives and wives have no idea how the military world works. Or most cases, I got lucky if I'm a Navy brat, so she was pretty good with it. But it gets, it's, it's a bit of a challenge, you know, I mean, that's not really has anything to do with us here, but we do have active duty guard people. It's, I don't know how much that affects them because they're with state, but there's also active duty reserves. It's something that got discussed at the meeting. And then crisis lines, stuff like that got discussed, nothing. Like I said, most of the time, military veteran fairs ends up talking about, they come counties that have active duty bases. But then they do get on the stuff that are VA stuff, you know. And. I think most everything. What you need to know for the shutdown, they, they posted that. I think that was more for the counties that, you know, had to do with. If you got a base in your county, because that could really affect a lot in your county. That's a, that's a main industry. I don't think any counties that have a military base are for. They all got a fire revenue going in for some area. See, federal agency updates on suicide, that we talked about that, that was. Can't remember that nine eight eight, is that the? Veteran suicide, they're talking about making it to where you can like, and I'm sure they'll work with Iowa. You can actually put that on your license plate now. Suicide hotline nine eight eight. So they're, they're trying to get that through. Yeah, pretty much covers it. I mean, it was. Short meeting as far as the amount of information, but we talked a lot about the veterans crisis line. And. Operation Green Light, people were talking about things they've done. There's some counties really go out. I mean, heck, they've got their. Most all of their county buildings, even a lot of all their county building, you know, like if we did public health, I mean. Louise is obviously going to do her end of the building on something like a veteran, but a buck dollar of that. But, you know, I think that they're kind of, I would like to be able to do, do it. If we do do something more elaborate here at the courthouse. I'd like to be able to do something when you have fire prevention week and when you have, you know, stuff for, for law, law enforcement, you know, the. Back to blue type thing, you know, blue life. And obviously the red, white and blue for national holidays, do your. Just seems to me that if we ever do do something, that would be pretty neat. Just the thought that I had. Other than that, I really didn't have a, I was busy as heck, but most of it had to do with all and bacon or pigs or market sales actually. Busy time of the year for trucking, you know. Keep calling the guy, he says, tells everybody he's retired.
Okay, thanks, Ty.
Yep.
Kyle?
Well, I, through discussion, I know when we did interviews for janitor position, one of them interviewed. Ended up not taking the position, but he offered up a very similar ticketing system for like a janitor. Is that? Something you would think department heads would use if there's.
I don't know that.
They're just. There, and it actually, and he was.
Many of the department had requests to the custodian that, hey, I need to have this done.
Yep.
And then that request is through email form or somewhere on a computer.
Very similar to what.
Does our custodian have access to a computer?
That was exactly.
He has a phone, he carries county phone.
Carries a county phone.
Just like having the light fixtures.
He's good. He's been, he gets around to the departments and people just utter. A whisper of something that needs done and it's getting done.
Well, yeah, the other thing that, that's not an issue.
I don't think it is at this point.
But the other options were that it would also even. Put data in there that says air conditioner in such a room needs serviced or generators need serviced.
I mean, I've talked to him whether he's wanting to.
It would pop up like, okay, October seventeenth, it pops up on his phone like. This generator needs service.
Or filters need changed.
Filters need changed.
Excellent point.
I mean, I don't know if we need that, and I'm just, because it sounds like he's. He's turned after very well.
Yeah, yes.
So I hope we need that right now, but if something the department has traveling issues with that we can. Maybe start looking into that, but don't apparently. So. Other than I'd had no meetings last week, other than. Trying to deal with some road issues during charge in Alcity. Then we can touch with Ben and his staff and Drake Lions working on it, but it's. It's not cut and dry, black and white. You make a road, center line, thirty three feet each way. But it's on a ridge road, so. Potentially no specific answer to if the road is actually.
On its marker.
Yeah, would it matter on the ridge road?
Oh, shoot, they follow the ridge line.
You know, and over here the same width though, the road is six, six foot is petitioned. But there's no true, potentially no true section markers to establish, establish where center of road is supposed to be. Inspired.
And then you think about it, a lot of times when you're at a curve or something, you might have to go straight up or straight down and.
Over the, over years. Natural flow of traffic is to take the shortest route. So you keep cutting the corner. The ridge and then the lane guy comes and the roads have a tendency to move by no fault of anybody's.
You're just working the road where it is.
So now we're.
That's a great point.
We're dealing with a situation of this where the landowner thinks he don't know. That the road has moved and is encroaching his right. Out, outside the limits. So our staff is working, billaging, trying to find an old aerial photos.
And you know, it's hard too, Kyle, because you don't, there's a lot of these guys that are the road crop farmers now. They ain't got near as much livestock, so fence lines have all came out. So that was another way that helped you kind of track where you were that you don't have now. And let's face it, it's easy to move your planner a little bit to say, on the same reason that you do.
Yep.
The road, you know, so you might have gained a little or lost a little, you know, because, yeah, that's, that's a great point.
So I, just kind of a history lesson, Ben was looking at Iowa code that recovers meandering roads.
You don't think about that, you know, because you think it's a permanent structure, but you do, they do longer, don't they?
Yeah. So that, that's been kind of a, not a saga, but it's an interesting fight that we're.
An ongoing issue, yes.
Yeah, because our bigger trucks, you know, they cut more of the corner, especially if you're meeting traffic in a curve. All the trucks along the trail, longer trailers, hang or so that, you can see how the road will move. And even on the outside of a corner, trucks will lean out a little bit, you know, if you're meeting traffic.
And without established fence line, it's really easy to move them.
Yeah.
Well, you start hitting fence posts when you're out the corner, you know your cut.
Not even something you think about unless somebody brings it to your attention like. I never thought about.
That and Damon and Tim and they were going to meet with this farmer today and.
There they are.
The revolution on this.
Speaking of the crew.
Perfect timing, guys.
Yeah, we were just discussing how roads can wander.
I'd bring them up to date on meandering roads. Little bit what's going on, or we can talk to them, but roads can be under, you know, the years and years of us going around. A shaded spot, you know. You know, it, it's not uncommon. Uh, makes it a lot easier when it's on section line, we can. Uh, defensively determine where that road is supposed to be petition wise, uh. On a curve, ridge road makes it a little more difficult to determine where that actual right away line. Original road was, but unless we have any kind of survey or. Of the, when they agree to that road to begin, so, so I'd have to look a little more into that specific situation, so. Then intend to, any information we got on.
Being nine forty five, Ben, we'll turn it over to you.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, well, let's start, just got a couple utility permits, one for long lines, install a. A handle, a cabinet there on the intersection where, where they're doing some fiber installation. In regards to the permit from last week before they're just right next to an existing handle that they have there. I had Frontier Communications doing about five, five mile with a plumbing along hundred forty street there on L, between L Avenue and. And it's just a lane entrances and everything. So just those two. The bridge project over there, they're, they're forming today, they'll be pouring concrete on the bridge railing on one side and then. And the, the columns of the railing on the other side, so a lot more pour from the bridge railings to be completed, but. And then. My knowledge, to their, what they're saying, they got their subcontractor for doing the bridge approaches coming in about two weeks. They're about, we've got them, they're scared. So, but they got shaping that they need to do that. They're still stripping forms or whatnot, so it. Plays right on with what they got going on, so.
So do you, do you physically go over there or do you just communicate by phone or how do you?
I try to make it over there a couple times a week, a couple times a week. Check it out. What they've got going on. Yesterday I was over there, I was.
Curiosity probably dragged you over there too, since such a thing.
Yeah. Should say eyes on the project, but, but no, I'm not over there every day. Casey is, he, if they're working, he's, he's over there. Doing the inspection and, and keeping tabs on what's going on for the working days, so. Uh, they probably have a little bit of a rainy day here this morning, but. But yeah, I drive it over there, it's often something. Uh, but yeah, it's still working, stripping forms and, and forming for the bridge rails perfectly, so.
I look at it every Sunday when I go to church.
And then, yeah, they will have a little bit of, they'll do a little bit of seating and they'll finish their shaping, get a little bit of it wrapped to be placed. And once they're completed, our guys are gonna. Uh, move in and do that side road business coming in the southwest corner. Yeah, it might be a month from now, but if, hopefully we'll have time to get this fall, weather holds out, when they get their project completed. Soon as we're able to move into that area, they got a lot of their equipment staged right there. Uh, soon as they're moved out, we can, we'll, we'll get that road shaped up, approaching, approaching highway there, so. Great crew, turn thirty street, they just began on that this, this week here. Uh, right now they got a covert on one end that we're, we're looking at having to address. Submerged, we may have to order a, a large ivory covert for, for that project if, if we're looking at doing upgrades roadway. Uh, from a level B to level A, which is of interest. You know, probably size that corded up from what is existing to accommodate for that, that. Better, better road plan, the, the better. Better hydrology, you know, if we're gonna upgrade for a little bit at level A, we might stay at a twenty five to a fifty year event, break. Water events, uh, I'll decide that one. But to my knowledge, it's still of interest to. To upgrade that roadway, we'll have to get a. Aggregate, a, a servicing agreement going on with the landowner, that's of interest and before we make that determination, so. That's typical of how we've been handling these roadways, that they, they paid the initial cost of upgrading it, putting blackstone on the roads and. We maintained it from theirs. Uh, so I'll give that agreement there before we go forward with that, they got restitution soon to upgrade that.
So, and he's already orally agreed to do that, right?
He's, he's expressed interest, he wants to do it to, we haven't gone to agree yet. Assigned you that. Assigned to agree on it, okay. But it sounds managed something that's wanted to be done. We'll keep watching. Bridge crew, they're working over there on I Avenue, they're just finishing up that, putting in those twin hundred eight inch coves. Uh, I'm sure playing that here is. But it sounds to me that they're finding their way around it as soon as the way they turn over time, they're, they're driving on her, so and. And that's all right, I believe, it'll be done here in the next day or two, they're putting a little more rock on the road. And should be able to open that up to, to traffic. And that project will be completed, hopefully. Good time for corn harvest, you know, to be able to, for them to be able to sell other ways. Uh, I think they did a great job over there and it looks, looks like.
Say what?
The picture I seen on Facebook. The crew.
Who put it on Facebook?
One of the crew was jabbing one of the other members of the crew, so. When they're back going, so.
That's gonna get you.
I would, I didn't even look at it, I'm like, oh, that's, that's that project, let's get from, you know.
But you can't have fun in your work. Well, it makes the day go by.
They're, they're a danger crew, so if that's the happy part, makes them that good for crew, it's well worth that, right?
They are a good crew, they get a lot of good work done. You know, they just, like I said, kind of do it all crew, but so they'll go from there to doing some roadway patching, pavement patching, which is coming up. Uh, they just, a lot of tools in their shit that they're able to. The damn good crew we have, so.
A little foster tongue.
Yeah, probably. Road tech crew, uh, Boeing, it's still doing some seeding, I believe, just on upgrading projects, but that's kind of, kind of the job. Waiting to a man here in about two over here. Just keep to the Boeing, I believe, two of the guys are done for the year. Gary and Chris, I believe, are hard done. And so we got Purdean and.
Gary, for the.
Charmed, sorry, charming. Uh, but uh, but yeah, Gary and Purdean are still, uh, I'll be going.
Purdean will be in January, I think.
Hard to slow that man down.
And they, uh, yeah, they did do the, go to the roadside conference, uh, was that last week? And uh, geared a lot towards, uh, the, the side things towards, uh, you know, reflecting prayer pastors and our, really, it's a. We're out there to keep weeds down and get things well, uh, yeah, so, uh, maybe a little more geared towards that, uh. That kind of topics, but uh, you know, not saying it's not important to have.
While you're on that subject, I was actually down in Shelby County, I run our back roads. I noticed where they were letting a lot of milkweed and stuff go, some of there, and I'm sure that's for the butterfly, bee, um, stuff like that, you know, trying to leave some things down there. Be fine, it'd be fun to be able to find a happy medium somewhere, but, but gosh darn, you know, to try to keep weeds down.
And, and I know, every once in a while, Purdean says, he goes, if you buy a big patch of milkweed, keep leaves and peels. As long as there's out and else and very summer around.
That's good to hear.
They're not supposed to spread the milkweed, if these milkweeds are in a, a patch of invasive plants, we're gonna spray it. But if, if it's milkweed that's standing alone, you know, that, they're not. Doesn't hurt anything to people, but it's, I, I know that's kind of the policy that, that we have, but. Leave the milkweeds, so, yeah, but yeah, uh, we're, first and foremost, we gotta keep it cleaned up and keep trees sprayed, uh. And uh, and uh, and keep things cleaned up, the dishes, so, um, sometimes they're collateral. With the milkweed, so, but yeah, it, it's good to have, how about their keep the, I said.
I just send us a lot more Bonnarx this year, so, so maybe we're being a little bit better than our, and we gotta have our pollinators, that's, it's important to. Everything we do.
But it was quite, I think this, I think I heard some of all, but there's a super year for Bonnarx, or something. Yeah, there need to see.
Comparatively speaking, I mean, I, I felt like I remember when I was just a kid, but. Yeah, that's good. Well, thanks, I appreciate that.
The thing, uh, we do have our final plans here for, for, uh, winding and overlay, uh, kind of road L fifty-one here. God, went over a little bit of specificity, because I, I said, my, really nothing's changed from the plans that I had given you last week, uh, I gave you a little bit. Uh, give a wording on the note for, for where you have availability for a match plant site, but uh, aside from that, uh, they should mirror what, what you have for plans, uh. That I gave you last week, so. Again, it's a, it's a three and a half inches of, uh, uh, of, of lift that we're doing on the entirety of it, widening it. Uh, off the north end, through the curves, about three and a half inches on the left, is that what I'm saying? We'll do the winding, it's eight inches of widening, uh, it will be eight inches thick and wide there, and then it'll have, uh. Three inches of, uh, surface lift on top of that, all over the entirety of the, the width of the road.
Do you determine, you know, our bid or our proposal or whatever it comes? Do you determine what type of asphalt, you know, cause like one forty-one they use, and I can't remember what the DOT guy told me that was, the oil, the new oil they planned in there. That's got some polymers, it's got plastic polymers or not, it's some type of polymer in there, but. That's why you got a few of them rumbles, cause it was a new thing, a new, new, it was a new layer. You know, asphalt, the machine that laid it, and then they were gonna get used to it, and that stuff hardens really fast, or sets up, I shouldn't say harden, sets up really fast. So that's what it was set up in, in the pack, or when it, by the time I came, it was already set, so that's why you got a couple of them little rumbly looking strips. They're, they're probably like eight or, eight or ten of mine, I can count them, but that stuff is supposed to have a longer life. Because of them polymers in there, that it alters elasticity, like many years longer, that's actually my own state's. Created project or created deal.
We, we've done, uh, some different, uh, 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 HMA mixes in, in, in different areas, I know, uh, we did, you know, there. It sounds like similar to, I know there, except we did a long D sixteen, where we were going from, uh, uh, concrete to, uh, to. At existing concrete and then going straight to asphalt, uh, rather than where we were building down the existing asphalt service in to, to, to do our lift on. Uh, we did it now there to try and help with some of the transfers cracking, it, coming through in our new surface, uh, uh, geared a little more towards that. For this one, uh, I don't, we specify the mix, uh, what is standard mix that we've used on, uh, most, most all for, uh. HMA projects, uh, I don't do the mixed design per se myself, okay? But I was just curious, it's a, it had to get sized, it was, it's a, they had to check the size, uh, and, uh, opposite of the, you know, intermediate. But that's about it, so, but it's pretty standard, thanks for, for.
Oh, yeah, but he's gonna complain, they're getting wires free, it's gonna look like a fucking road group, but.
Through the curves, a little blinder through the curves, uh, and then to the north end, coming into truck road, we widening the, the south portion of L fifty-one, uh, just. Project reasons, uh, we're gonna widen the entirety of it, but uh, so we don't, we'll be able to do, so, uh. I think, uh, and again, uh, initially, we're only gonna be going over the top, we'll go with about inch, inch and a half, uh, gonna build an inch and, uh. Do the widening and then, uh, come over to the top with the inch and a half lift. Specifically just to seal the edge from the seam where we're blanking, the existing roadway, where, uh, after we had done some patching, uh, a couple years back, uh. But the, the underlying structure is breaking up a little bit, we, we felt we needed a little more structure, so we, we did additional lift, uh, you know. In our, our design set here, so.
You guys had pixel on patches on that, but seventy-seven?
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 How long ago, how long ago was that?
I just could have kept going to, I know.
I was gonna say seven, let's just cut it off, if you run out of time.
Remind me again when that project's gonna start.
Start, it's gonna let January twenty-first, uh, it'll be up to the contractor, we'll start the on back somewhere, in case, uh, so, but there'll be a. I'm not sure what late, but, um, late finish date is, but, uh, um, but, uh, starting to.
So Ben, would you like a motion to approve the final plans?
I would.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Gene, second by Ty, any further discussion?
I just, I know, we're just historically, that the highway gets wider on the south half of that naturally. When they asked you a little widening going so far, but what is it, seven miles, the, the highway gets wider, cause it was made at a later date. It was.
Was from the daily.
Yes.
And that was already already wider.
So, I mean, it's now that we're shortening or gonna notice a big difference change, it's just, uh, uh.
Gotcha.
It's, it will be hugely noticeable, but, uh, it, well. It'll be noticeable, uh, but, uh, but yeah, the, the top part is slightly wide, a, a little bit of that is though, it was already overlaid. It kinda had a little bit of squish over from the non-existing pavement, it's not really supported on that last, uh, six inches, but it's there. It's a slightly wider.
I just wanna make that noted to.
When I come door, I always kind of relaxed up until Staley's Corner, and after that, you feel like you get a bullier up.
Yeah, that's a, that's why we're, that's why we're widening, uh, roadways, uh.
And you know, you think about it, it's like our machinery, you know? We got all them bigger tires on the combines, obviously help reduce compaction, but oil, oil, there's a, never hurts, cause. I mean, after a fall, I'm sure that's got a torrid shoulders for you guys to form that wipe, that, especially like on that stretch there. And then that gotta eat up the edges of roads too, then, that's gonna tell us to preserve our roadway, yeah, it is hard on you to.
Yeah, preferably either on or off the road, you know, that, that wouldn't be able to track it, if they're driving right on that edge, it, it just breaks it up, uh. And, uh, even with the wheel off on the shoulder, it's gonna smash it down, uh, you know. You know, that's why we have to address our, our payment digits every year, I'll, I'll do it to some degree, so.
Question, I'll just, I'll call the questions.
Okay, on this.
First, we call, well, real call, is it favor say aye? Oh, same sign, turbo side motion curious. Thanks, Ben.
Good project.
Is there anything else on there, so you got dust control policies or?
Uh, yes, uh, it does, just talking, boy, I know it's kind of been brought up here, uh, a couple of days, uh, dust control areas, uh. And it's getting to be about time of year that, uh, that, yes, when it's probably most wanted out there and being effective, it's when harvest traffic is going on. The traffic, the, uh, dust control site set up and sprayed, it is sprayed in August, they are getting to be about that two months, uh, of, of being down. And, and to some degree, there's their effectiveness, and, um, it's the county's policy that we retain the right to. Be able to make the determination of when to blade through those, the, the right away sites, when, when the roadway teams, it's needed, and, uh, and, uh. We try to use our best judgment in, in regards to that, with a difference, if the road's getting rough, we gotta do something about it. We try to do our best to not touch dust controls areas until we absolutely have to. And there is gonna be somewhere where the effectiveness of, to where you, you're driving through, and it, it's. You know, it's faded and, uh, ineffective to where you can't even tell that the dust control is there, or, and, uh, and at that point, we blade through them, uh, and this. Again, we try to keep them out there as long as we can, some, some product, uh, longer than others, uh, uh, different companies, you know, depending on the. Depending on how it's applied, the rates, uh, we, we try to specify rates, but no one can go out there, you know. We're not out there metering it by any means, so, but, uh.
Do the companies have a date where they apply their last allocation for the year?
We specify the dates that we, that we want them to apply.
Two weeks.
What is our end date?
Uh, it's a two week period in, uh, middle of August.
May, uh, by May fifteenth and August seventeenth.
Yeah, it would have been the fourth, August, uh, eleventh to the twenty-second is, would have been the date range, I do believe, that we wanted to apply. The reason we do that is so it's a, kind of a, uh. Organized effort, of, of trying to get it applied, we don't want, I'm applying it all throughout the summer, different times, calling, I say, you played our spot, we're gonna have dust control put on. We're gonna have it applied in, you know, get the site saved up, everybody, I get it applied, and, uh, we try to maintain it from there, if we had two or fifty. Dust control sites, everybody applying it, you know, at different times, and they're expecting, you know, and trying to keep a track of how long. You know, we leave it on there, it, it'd just be a, a mess, so we try to keep it an organized effort, if we're, uh. Uh, put it out there, we, we specify what kind of products are gonna be allowed and rates, and, uh. And, uh, to become approved, that there's a, a, a product out there.
Did you find mutual satisfaction with any recent complaints at that point, probably?
We do, every year we're gonna get a couple of, that, that, hey, that, that we played it through our, our dust control, you know, uh. Think you owe us dust control, you know, because we gotta retain that right, we'd have to our fifty people all determined, we all, that, uh, the dust control, they're too soon. Of, of one, we're just like, we'll do our best to not disturb it until absolutely needed, uh, uh, not saying mistakes won't happen, uh. Or whatnot, when it's losing its effectiveness, or if, when there's some, some will be, it be done for us, but, uh. That's kind of our, our policy on dust controls.
Small percentage of the.
We try, like I said, we, we try not to touch anything, and, uh, but, uh, that's, that's long and short of, uh, just kind of. Why I wanna discuss, this, this time of year where they'll start to get through, like it's a complaint, so. Thanks, Ben.
I got one, just one question, have we had any follow-up or continuation of closing with our charter of property? Cause I, it's get time of year where the crops will be out, I know our staff will probably want to get in there to start.
That's where your op- operation or your option for a batch of land would be.
Right.
Did I stall it all, or we're still working with both attorneys to get a closing set up?
Last, uh, last conversation I had with the landlord was, uh, he really didn't want to close on the property till after the first. Uh, and, and I know we have a purchase agreement, saying we can close first of the year. Well, prior to the first, Jesse didn't pay for the prop, for, for the property till after the first. Uh, he's allowing us to get in there and get shape, site shaped up, you know, do our grading, he did sign us, uh, like, uh. Similar to our gr- uh, roadway grading, uh, roadway improvement agreements, I'm signing a form that, that Martha had, uh, uh, written up for us. Saying, yes, we can get out there, do the shit of shaping, it's a little bit of a chance to take, uh, shaping ground, we don't own, but, uh. Again, uh, we, I do have a purchase agreement.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure we weren't getting held up, cause it's, like I said, we wanted to have some work done in there after the concert, and I'll do. So, and as long as everything, we got an agreement put in place, we can close.
Is that in corn?
Yeah.
Like an avail anything off that, or?
Well, I would advise them to.
Yeah, I would, I would talk to the, right to you.
We can beat all that.
Those sons leaving that money later.
We, we've never received indication that it's not something that's gonna go through, um, you know, we, we'll work with the, the tenant and the landlord, uh. You know, make sure that they're, they're done, you know, we, we can get in there and, uh, we, uh, yeah, but if, doesn't want to close a lot of the first. We do have dinner plans that, uh, that, that available for a batch on the side, but if, uh, at that point, uh, we can always amend the plans, should. Should everything fall through, we can't amend our plans, but, uh, I don't see that happening, we're gonna proceed as though we can shave the site up. And, uh, and develop, and, uh, and that's, go from there, so.
Perfect, unless the hills don't explode, I don't perceive any problems.
I don't either, it's, uh, the landlord that's pretty honorable builder, so. But yes, I, I, there may be some competition between now and then, I mean, we can't close certain, and, uh, this for. You know, helpful things, but, uh.
All right, thanks, Ben, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That was actually.
There's one right here.
While that's going around.
Don't make any decisions on our talk, we're quite sorry, attorney's proud of them.
I'm unarmed.
You know, it'd be a couple of weeks. When that comes to them, we'll shoot out in a couple days of that coming in, so, we're about two weeks from that, please, before it. Now we're gonna go cut some trees.
So we'll move on to the, uh, estimate for trench list, are you prepared?
All right, this guy, thanks.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you, Steve.
Well, nice to meet you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, so, uh. I guess, I, you know, I was wondering, you guys had some questions, uh, concerning what got going on, you know?
What company are you with?
Bailey Incorporated.
Okay.
Um, we're out of Ames, Iowa, um, we've been doing this since two thousand and seven, um. We, uh, full-time put pipeline in the ground, rehabilitate old sewer lines, um, it starts out like this, um. It's a fiberglass belt that we put a resin in, um, then we, uh, we'll, we'll put a rubber in a few minutes, hold it like this. The painters tape it every eight, ten inches, we push or pull it in place, apply air, epoxy tape. And then when it's done, it's either a yellow version like this or a blue, um, this is our two mil variant, and for pipe that's really deteriorated. Um, we can get even thicker mill, um, so, you know, looking at the lines here, there's not so much of a low spot, but there's a. Ton of scale buildup, and there's not a lot of a bottom of the pipeline, so, we go in and we try to just do a cleaning and we get that out of there. Or start going through the pipe, and that's what's really holding the debris, and then that smell that we have going on in there, I recommend to doing like a smoke test. We do a smoke test, we can at least figure out where it's coming from a hundred percent, and maybe see if we can't just repair that little area. Um, but the pipe is not in good shape, um, going all the way out the building, and it was like, uh, I believe it's. The, the buildup, and it's hard to tell the difference between buildup and structural, and, okay, it really is, um, it's just got a lot of, a lot of, uh, barnacles. Sometimes they see, you know, picture like a cave, some of the barnacles that, that I, I see, they're little pinholes actually, and, and you get, you know.
Seeing this on, how long is sections can you have of that?
Uh, I can do, uh, so we, we. Um, I can do, um, so we we what we do is we'll remove that outside yellow, like a couple inches of it and we can actually overlap our other liner. With that version, we can do thirty five foot at a time and we can do a maximum of a hundred and thirty five feet from our access point. Um, we have uh, other variants that we do like inversion or we can shoot three to five hundred feet continuous. But for most of our our jobs we do, you know, because of the the turns and the access points, we'll do our our pull and place method.
How many feet you estimate here?
Here, I'm on top of my head.
Hundred and three over at the city center.
Yeah, same there one hundred and three and here was uh, yeah, sixty eight, oh, right, sixty eight, okay. Cause I know there's two projects you're looking at. Guess I missed it. The other building, that that pipe does look like it's in worse shape than here. It's pretty rough.
This one make the.
Yeah, it's thick cast, but then there's areas in this building too that have been replaced over the years. I can tell visually like getting to an area where. Okay, this is not as bad. We still don't know how good the bottom, the bottom of it is, but the top of it is visually different. You can still see some of the the tar coating on the inside of the pipe.
So what do you like, roto router that thing?
What we, what we do is we go through with um, a a machine that spins at fifteen hundred to two thousand RPM. And we have carbide tipped chains or ceramic sandpaper. We go through and we just, we just blow that stuff all the way off. And then we jet it all out to the city. Um, and we we make the pipe done barrel smooth. Um, and you know, if we if we have to, which, you know, if there's a ton of it, we'll get the pump truck here and we have a catch basket and we'll pump it up at the manhole. Um, so that the debris doesn't, isn't going through the city sewer. So if there's a, if there's a, just a little bit of it and it's small and it's fine, it flows fine, but if we start getting real big chunks, we go in and we cut, we suck it out.
How long a process do you estimate it to be to get both facilities complete?
I would say the um, the other, other building would be. Probably three or four days. Um, here I would estimate probably two to three. Depending, um, you know, like, like I said, first step here to make sure we figure out that smell would be a smoke test. And I, you know, highly recommend that because then we can pinpoint it and then from there, you know, the decision can be made, okay, let's just. Try to do a spa repair here for now and get the smell out of here or yeah. It's, let's just cover this whole line while we're in here and I'd be at your discretion once we figured out where the issue's coming from.
So the courthouse quote does include the smoke test?
Yes, I put that on there.
Just over eleven hundred dollars. And then the, so the remaining, the sixty eight feet at fifteen thousand, that would be determined upon the result.
So yes, I put that on there, the estimate. If you guys want to go to sixty eight feet, that's what it costs. Smoke test, I know that he's done first. Um, that is most important in in my book, so that way I know exactly where it's coming from. It could be, it could be a line that at some point they abandoned. I've seen that and it was abandoned in a wall. And it had a rubber cap and over a couple of years that that thing dry rotted off. I know some of the smell is real horrible in there. I didn't smell it in the crawl space. It's just in that room. So that, that's why it's. Right, something I mean is it definitely strong. I don't know if you guys smelled it in there, but it's.
Basically put this in and then expand it?
Yep, yep.
And then what it, what's on, because it isn't smooth.
The epoxy that we put in here, that's what smoothes it up. So we will actually calibrate this with a resin. And then this is a cured by UV light. So air it up for ten minutes, turn the lights on for ten minutes and it's rock hard, it's rock hard, uh, you know.
And see if it's smooth.
Yeah, yep, yep. This is the roughest you'll see depending on, not depending if we use our blue material or not.
Okay, now I'm trying.
Yep, yep, we got ten year um, installation bumper.
Fifty year.
Life expectancy. If something happens, the liner within ten years, we fix it for free, no matter what it is. Um, unless we find that somebody decided to dump a whole bunch of acid down the line. Which eats your cast iron anyway.
Doing it this way over, over at the other building, we're not gonna break up any concrete.
Right, right. So when do you think you could start?
We, so from the time we say, so yes, you know, right now we're um, one to two weeks out, most commonly. Uh, for the work we got going.
So that'd be something you would, you would get done this fall for sure.
Oh yeah, definitely.
So would you entertain starting at public health first or do you think that? Having that public restroom not being able to be used.
That would be totally fine and that would get us in the groove because yeah, here's gonna be a little bit harder to work around because everybody's in there working. So you know, doing the smoke test is fine. It's not, it's not a harmful smoke and it's, you know.
So just communicate with that department head and he will be, he'll be able to, you know, work with you.
And sometimes they're in and out of the office.
But you know, this, you know, it's hard because yeah, we're gonna be a little bit disruptive because we're gonna be ser- physically searching for where the smoke's coming out. Crawling all over that area. Just to, it will show its face, but we're gonna pump a lot to figure out exactly where that crack in the concrete or a wall is.
Well, I think it needs to be done both ways because that's still right.
We will be doing a budget amendment to accomplish this. I mean.
This is out of the capital improvement.
Yes, correct, and we've utilized um, all those.
Oh, last week Jeff, he's mentioned of the low spot causing a lot of the problem, the CC, the S building. Now, how does this fix it?
It's not so much, in my opinion, a low spot over there. I think the bottom's out of the pipe and nine out of ten times when the bottom falls out, because I can physically see the the cracks on the side. And what a cast iron will do is it'll, it'll start leaking, it'll kind of form a, you know, a void underneath the pipe and that part of the pipe that gets brought in, it just drops down. Okay, and we put our liner through there and we'll put a vinyl sleeve around this so it does not go into that belly. And even if there's a small little belly, you have a smooth surface, there's nothing that for anything to catch on. So you're gonna be able to push the debris through the line. I I I, yeah, we've done belly pipes all the time and it's a smooth surface. I mean, there's a. There's a lot of people who put PVC in the ground and they don't pay attention and do it right. They'll have a massive belly in that line, but it always pushes through because it's a smooth surface.
I didn't see how that was gonna fix that, but with your explanation, I can understand.
So if a pipe is half full of belly, it'll work just fine. If it's over half, then no, we need to dig that up. But this right here, right now, is sitting at a quarter. So my camera lens is um. Three quarters of an inch up the top and I'm just at the base of it. So you're talking that, you know, a little over half inch of belly in that line. So that's my need.
That makes sense. For entertaining motion to approve. Motion by Kyle, second by Ty. Any further discussion? Well, roll call, in favor, say aye. Chair goes aye, motion carries. Yep, you guys have a good, good day.
He was running that camera down here the other day and I'm like, you ever get one of those? You don't say that word. And something new like this comes in. I mean, nobody's as a little kid as saying, when I grow up, I want to fix pipes. You ever wonder where all these crafts come? I mean, just some of the people.
I didn't know there was a way to do that with the trenchless.
I watched tree, I watched on TV for, I was always at tree meeting. But I think they developed this in the big cities because the infrastructures are totally shot again.
Next up, we've got Taya here, um, from Manning Regional Recovery Center to talk about opioid.
I'm not very good. I got people to help me with that. My desk has a lot more papers than that on one side and we keep busy. We definitely keep busy. Um, so yes, it's been a while.
How we doing?
It's going good. You know, a lot going on. Always got a lot of irons and fire down there, keeping busy, doing different things. We are, we're actually having a new project, um, looking to take our prevention outreach to the next level. So I know I talked to you guys a lot about prevention. We've been doing, I brought show and share last time that hidden plain site bay. Statewide with AC four C stuff going into a lot of the schools, um. Just in the last month, we were down in Crowver County MBO. We have our Weaver coming up for ribbon week. We were in Dennison two weeks, the two weeks ago, October something. What can we, week two ago, my runs are me a week ago. Goodness, our weeks are, weeks are running together. Um. We did the job fair at Dennison. They go right next to the sheriffs and those whistles. Um, so I heard about that. I did not go. Nika went and did that, but I definitely heard about the whistles in the sheriff's department, so. But, um, so just working our way around the counties like we have been trying to figure out new ways and different things. So about a year ago, Nika actually, um. Came to me and wanted to do a prevention trailer, a hidden plain site trailer. It was a new thing that had come out. Um, so Nika says on the. Alcohol board with, I'm probably saying something wrong here, um, with AC four C is the statewide prevention program focusing on youth. And other ones that run this hidden plain site, they've been giving us all the stuff for that, doing a lot of stuff and with that, she wanted to take it up a notch and do a trailer. So we started looking into this a year ago. There were a lot of logistics, a lot of hoops to jump through, especially with liability and insurance and all that stuff. And so that is the next venture that we're going down is we want to have some more interactive stuff. We go to do, we do a lot of booths. Go to a lot of conventions and stuff, but the interactive things seem to be more entertaining. Um, so we are moving to do a trailer. There's one other in the state, YSS actually just opened theirs right before the state fair. They were at the state fair if anybody went to that. Um, and they had their trailer open, so they did like an enclosed trailer and completely outfitted it. When we were doing our research, I really didn't want to do that. Um, so we actually got funding, um, yes, last week from Carroll County. With their opioid funding to fund a camper. So we're gonna do a small camper and open, turn that into. It's supposed to represent like your teenager's bedroom or a couple places in the house. It will be for eighteen and above. Obviously, we'll be able to teach children how to hide things from us, but um, we want to be able to teach more parents. How to look for signs, how to find things in the bedrooms, because I mean, I feel like I was a creative teenager and it's gone to a whole nother level. Um, so we've got a lot of donations with supplies and stuff.
So who's gonna retrofit your trailer, make it how you want it?
We found, so we actually just, we we did a lot of research to find the one that we wanted, that, so it's, um. Actually sitting on the lot in Perry. Um, we got a small camper that can be pulled behind a vehicle we already have. So we didn't have that and it has a slide out in like a Murphy bed in it, so there's no walls in our way. So we don't have to outfit it. It's already got a bedroom set up. It's got a living room set up. Um, hence why we did that versus a trailer, because otherwise my maintenance men would have to outfit all this stuff for me and they would do it and they would happily do it. But less work I give on them, the better. And this way, we also aren't setting, spending much time having to set all this stuff up and down. It folds right back into place. We can use the inside of the trailer as storage. So we did, um, that is, that is our goal. The, like I said, Carroll County supervisors, um, approved the trailer aspect of it. My goal for the whole project is to hit a couple different county supervisors, because I'm hoping obviously to take it to more than one county. Um, and have different various aspects gave for by different counties. So Carroll County has approved to cover the trailer and all the startup costs with that. Um, they did that last week. And I'm hoping, obviously has to go through steps with the hospital, hospital board, all that stuff. I've gotten all their verbal approval, but they have to check the boxes. So I'm hoping, we are hoping to take it, take it to the statewide event on November fourth for its first presentation is my goal. Um, to get this up and moving and, um, we're looking at, you know, county fairs, barbecue fest, um, different things in the area that we can take this to. To do more hands-on interaction. People look at our, and then they'll come talk to us, they look at the stands, but what's, what's the next step now? And we drag our totes and our bags out to different conventions. Well, if it rains and we have to put them away and we can't actually show people some things, then we just did the mental health walk. Um, for the state a few weeks ago and of course it started raining, so we had to put all our stuff away and this I think just adds another level of our ability to do things. Um, especially with the parents and more adult education. Um, it is not something that we will be educating our youth on, but. More for the adult aspect on this. Um, we hit the schools and we go into them. So the next level is the adults. Um, we did, Nika went through. We went down and saw a YSS trailer in Des Moines, get a little bit of idea on some things we might be missing. There are some other states that have some up and running, so we've been looking online at theirs, just kind of get a good idea, make sure we have a good coverage on what we decide to do. And I'm sure we'll change it as it goes and develops and we learn new things. But that's kind of our newest prevention aspect. We're still doing the same things that we've always done, going to the schools, teaching at different events, going to. Events in the county that are put on the mental health walks, the career fairs, the um, red ribbon week is a good one that I get a lot of. Speakers out into the community on. So those events are still going and we've set up some really good relations with the local schools, which has been nice. That was kind of hard to start off with. I know I talked to you guys about that, but we've got some good relationships built now that. Uh, people are reaching out more frequently, which is great. So still working on those things, but that is our next endeavor. Where that leads with you guys, um, I know we still have our previous commitments, obviously, that are funding a bunch of our prevention stuff. But, um, with this new hidden plain site project, like I said, Carroll County funded the camper. Um, there are different aspects that we're looking at getting funded. One part that, you know, obviously my maintenance man brought up that I did not think about is storage of the camper. They're like, hey, you don't want this thing sitting out in the weather. You put, you know, you invest in it, you don't want it to stem further. Um, temporarily, we have worked out an agreement with a place in Manila that it will, we'll just have to take it back and forth to a. Weather controlled storage place. Um, but long term, we would like to put up a small shed. That it will store it at the hospital so we can pull out and use it more, but yet keep the rodents out, keep the weather from damaging it, those types of things. So that's the next funding that I'm looking for.
Dryer sheets.
Yes, they will keep, yes, yes, I use those in my house as well in different areas, but yes. So, um, something that I'm hoping to use, obviously the winter will have to be a little more cautious with. I don't want any accidents with people being on the road, so. Wintertime, a little bit more cautious in those areas, but in the summer, fall, spring, I want to get it as much as we can. So having a storage place for that. So that's the next proposal that I bring to counties, including you guys itself, is funding for storage for this trailer.
What do you estimate cost of your storage building to be?
Yep, so the maintenance gave me an estimate of sixty four thousand, one hundred and seventy five dollars. And I apologize as I'm saying that, I guess I didn't ask them for a breakdown of where that came from. I do, I do know that includes them doing some of the work. To keep our prices a little bit lower. They were gonna do some of the groundwork for us as well, what their abilities are, but the rest would be higher than on driver.
It'd be at those uh, hospital facility.
Yep, yep, it would be outside the recovery centers so that we have easy access to it and can pop up to events last minute if we find something. So yes, um, the trailer, the camper and the outfitting for that, um, was funded, that was just under twenty nine thousand. So that part has been funded. Um, now I'm just talking around, looking at the shade. Carroll County did say, obviously, if I hit a. Bump in the funding for that, we could come back to them again. We're just step by step approach and going through the counties.
What is our normal funding for your recovery center?
Fifty percent. It's a percentage versus.
Fifty percent of what we receive for. And see, we haven't received hardly any yet this year.
When does that typically come out?
Um, it should be coming. Some more, we, we've, we have received twenty four thousand um, to date.
Since January one or since our fiscal year?
Fiscal year.
So July one.
Yeah, July one. Um, our fund balance sits at, um, just over almost eighty thousand, seventy nine nine. Is currently where our fund balance. We began, um, this fiscal year with fifty five thousand in the, in the fund. Carryover from last year. Um, so there are funds available.
The opioid, opioid funding usually goes fifty percent of all of our funding goes. And then the other fifty percent goes to whatever we decide. Sometimes we don't decide and that's why.
No, because I mean, it kind of, you kind of have in the past have based it off of requests. I know last year we talked about. Um, Manning Regional Healthcare Center, the recovery center getting more of the funds that were left. More of the funds that were left. We, I just never got that accomplished. Of course, the money's still sitting here. And, and we have budgeted to spend eighty thousand dollars this year. Which if we, if we get more than that, end up with more of a fund balance and you all want to contribute. More to the recovery center. That is still a possibility, depending on how many much funds. We get in.
And that's very.
We've budgeted eighty thousand, that eighty thousand, then half of that eighty?
No, half the funds received by opioid settlement, which is currently turning. My language, I swear.
Well, he has a.
Woofta. I haven't had enough coffee, I guess. Um, twenty-four thousand is currently what we have received.
Right.
And so it would be half of that amount.
Right.
Um, the other project you could fund with. With the others, the balance, the fund balance, the fifty-five thousand.
I know initially.
That makes sense.
When I given that with you guys, the fifty percent was decided, so there was always room for other people to.
Right.
Present projects and stuff. Yeah, absolutely.
We just haven't, there aren't many out there to do these types of things, so.
One of my goals have always been to get, you know, some kind of drug rehab back in Crawford County. That's been. Huge ever since checks recovery had to close down. And, you know, those funds need to be used. I'm really trying to save that in Crawford County, so.
Right.
Cause, cause the travel we've talked about, you know, most of those folks don't have their license anymore. They wore out all their families and friends and so.
We talk at the state level every year about transportation. I have seen some other counties. Use it for transportation funds.
Yeah.
Um, they've used it for like taxi vouchers to get people to our facilities.
And that's kind of where I'm hoping we can go with that.
I know, and I know we looked at coming into Crawford County, we just unfortunately with the, the way the insurance pays, it pretty much inhibits us from doing that.
You know, we would have a location, you know, our new, also Robert County Community Services Building, that they're beautiful.
What do you mean the way that's medic, medicated?
Pool of insurances. So because when you go to a second, a satellite location. Your reimbursement rate is increased because it's not at your main location. So it's only a percentage of your reimbursement rate. And we already don't get full percentages, like all, all insurance companies pay us percent of what we bill.
Yeah.
And that's decreased significantly if it's not at your main location, which inhibits places.
From growing like that, growing a satellite.
Yeah, it's one of the reasons first trains had to shut down is they couldn't, you know, you couldn't afford it. Now, when we looked at it last time. The rent on a building was significantly high and that took out, it wouldn't even break even after rent utilities and costs of. But we couldn't even, all we were looking to is just not lose money. So we couldn't even accommodate that.
Let's say you had a space that.
That'd be a good business plan.
You didn't have to pay an arm and a leg.
Their insurance.
I can't speak to my board, but I feel like they would always be willing.
Door.
To relook at things if the opportunity presented itself.
Have you been to our new building?
I'm not. It, nope, the last time we had this discussion, I don't believe the purchase was finalized.
Ah.
It was something that you, that you had brought up, but the purchase was not finalized. So when we looked at it, we looked at renting a space from the lawyers downtown. Where they used to have the building.
Right.
We looked at renting that space.
Yeah.
Some discussion.
Some discussion.
But absolutely something we can always relook at.
It's open today, uh, if you wanted to stop in, take a look, see if it's worth it.
Or yeah, where's this building at?
Uh, it's Fourteenth Street, uh, First Avenue. North.
Yep.
For Dr. Dr. Krabs.
Oh, yes.
So the door downstairs would be open, uh, Luisa's veterans are in there and if you just.
C C C S.
Yeah, C C C S. Yes, I went to Dr. Krabs' office.
Yes, just stick your head inwards.
Crawford County Community.
C C C S. Yeah, Crawford County Community Services. And so that we, maybe that to encompass, uh, things that our healthies will need.
I will bring it back to our board. The catch is, I know we had a look at it last time too, the caveat is this money is run out, is, will run out. So the, the, we have to make sure we have the abilities to sustain those services. Currently, one of my biggest concerns in my facility right now is the big beautiful bill. With the changes coming to Medicaid, we're currently watching that. I, I've talked about expansion for the last two years. We had architects in last year. We had our, um. Designs finalized to expand to add a, and when this was announced, it put all of our stuff on hold because we don't know. How it's going to affect our recovery center.
Heard that.
And we run about, currently we're running about sixty percent Medicaid patients, which is a population that needs to be served. Um, so I think hopefully once this year passes and we get some sort of idea, but. I will bring this back to my board now that there's a building that wouldn't have rent to it and another option if it's something we can relook at. Um.
Wouldn't Medicaid and uninsured patients be your primary? Yeah.
We run sixty percent Medicaid currently. We don't take uninsured patients.
And then, and that, that's what I wondered. I mean, is.
There's no funding.
People that are having.
Yeah.
Drug issues that upstep from mental health or create mental health. I mean, that's.
We do absolutely offer assistance in getting Medicaid, which is not something we advertise, because I don't have the staff to do it.
Yeah.
But when somebody calls me and says, well, I don't know what to do, between my secretary and myself, we make sure we figure out how to help that person do that. I know. It's not something that we, like I said, we advertise, because I really don't have the staff to do it, but if somebody needs help, we gotta figure it out. Especially if they're local, we can meet them somewhere to help them do the application. We do. Um, but, um, uninsured patients, we don't have, we don't get grants fundings. We don't get, there's nobody, there are grants out there. You have to meet certain specifications to qualify for them and we don't. Um, with the new behavioral health districts, I'm not sure how that's gonna align up. Uh, yeah, I know. So, um, there may be some block grant funding for there in the past when it was just. Mental health districts, we didn't qualify because we were substance abuse, not technically mental health. So we didn't get a whole lot from Rolling Hills. We kind of had a battle with that.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping with the new behavioral health districts and district, well, we might have some better luck. But I don't know yet.
Yeah, nobody knows.
Yeah.
Nobody knows.
So I'm hoping there will be some better luck out there for us to offer a little bit more services.
I've been impressed with the district directors.
Lots of.
They seem to be aggressive go-getters, don't they?
They are the right. This is the board of directors.
Well, no, it's the directors of each district.
District.
People that are the core, whatever CEOs.
I think what her name is.
Susan, something, Susan?
Yeah, Susan. She's on council.
I would love to get a contact. Yeah, we currently work, so I actually applied to be on that district board and I did not get accepted. Um, they have somebody listed for Carroll County and Crawford, for the, for our area that's in Carroll County, but I've never heard of the person, so I'm not sure who it is. Um.
We haven't heard.
It's listed on their website. I watch it.
Okay.
It is listed on the website, but I don't recognize the name. Says it's, I applied for the person that works in the field. Um. And we do have some spots still open in our district for lived experience. Um, representatives that are not filled. I'm not sure whether they're out on that application. Um, and then just kind of keep it, we also applied to house a navigator for the district in our facility. Um, so.
Figure mine, can you get you that?
Yes, I will email you for this.
Forget.
I understand that. I understand that, but we did apply to house a navigator. We figured that couldn't hurt anything, would only help our benefits and. More than happy to work directly with the district, so. Um, trying to work with them the best that we can in all sorts of aspects. Um, and looking at those.
So Kyle.
Abilities.
Yeah, I just, I mean, thinking about, you know, Nancy Reagan had the just say no campaign and I always figured all this prevention is. Or the power to cure, so.
Give you two pounds.
Maybe two pounds with inflation, you know? I think it would be a great opportunity to take some of this excess funds to help them. Establish this prevention.
You've got plenty.
Uh. I don't know what her number is. I'm just thinking. You know, Carroll County threw out twenty-nine thousand. At least jabbing with a pretty close number, so, but that's my thought, but, uh.
And, and like I said, the ten about a building, I do, like I said, we do have plans for the next year.
Hopefully with prevention, we don't have to spend so much on.
Right.
The long run.
The cure.
The cure.
Yeah.
That's the goal they tell us.
So pick your head in and look at my building before you leave.
Yes, we'll do that. Yep. Um, you know.
What do you plan on starting this building?
I sound a jab. Yeah, right. Sorry.
That wasn't a building project you've started.
Is there a number you were thinking?
I think twenty-nine thousand.
Only five thousand? That's kind of what was in my head.
Kind of what Apple or our balances. That's what I was thinking.
And my goal is to keep track of these next few months of the counties that we go into and go ask them for, to meet, to match. So if we spend a lot of time in Shelby County, I'll be going to Shelby County and asking them to match what you guys put in. If we're offering the service in their county too.
Well, our balance is seventy-nine-nine.
That's what the third day.
That's no, that's with.
And has to be paid.
That's with beginning balance and current revenues, which is. Twenty-four, six was what's been paid so far. Seventy-nine-nine is our current balance.
And we would have enough then to.
But I just think at twenty-five thousand, we want to explore it.
Taxi tickets, because that's the biggest challenge that we have is getting our, our county people.
The taxi.
And we can help with that.
I've been.
They maybe could, uh.
Another good idea.
We just need to really hammer it in on how we could get our people that are in crisis. Out of, I just hate.
I know.
Both things are integral, prevention and crisis.
Right.
I like that way you're showing the.
We got a lot of people.
It's not emotions, Mary.
I don't, do we want a motion yet or not? Until, I mean, I hate to commit funds to something that.
I want those parents, so yes.
It's not even started.
Yep.
That's where we speak from is the.
I would definitely like to read.
Five thousand.
But I'd like to revisit or bring it back when your building project gets started. I mean, I would.
Do you have a good date mine for that?
What do you do here?
I'm like a yellow building.
I doubt it. I mean, I don't know if we could even. What are your thoughts on it? I mean, if you started today, if you could get a build this.
I mean, I wanted, I wanted to lash, oh, the shed.
Yeah, the shed.
It would have to be until money's in hand. I apologize.
Yeah.
Um, once we can get the funding together.
So you don't want to have all the money raised before you would build?
Unless my board changes their mind, that is currently the answer I have been given.
Okay.
Now, if we get a chunk of it upfront, they may reconsider that.
Well, if you have a. Isle of money over here and you're asking for this, they're maybe like. I've got the money for this.
Yes.
For.
Yes, it will be something that will be brought to their attention. Um, I have a list of projects for them to brought to their attention on the thirtieth, I believe, is the next thing they need.
Oh, but you want to get a verbal amount of another twenty-five thousand towards this table upon their board passing their building plans or? I mean, I think they can make that a motion.
I would also like.
How many counties do you?
We have money set aside to help get people that need rides down to their meetings that I, I need some of those funds that are set here in Crawford County. Earmarked for that.
Tax, see service in Dennis, there are a couple. There are, uh, can, region twelve, uh, you know, kind of gives tickets to, I can't. We work with regions twelve.
Yep.
Um, but they don't operate that late evening.
We have a taxi.
So even i- if there was funds to help. Uh, somebody that, um, wants to get somebody down there, but they don't have the funds either. It doesn't have to be.
That's a weekly occurrence for us.
Yeah, right. So if you could say we could give you twenty dollars to bring them down, uh.
The catch is we have to be careful because when you give people gas cards, they get used for things that are not gas.
I know, I know, but it could be reimbursed after, you know, I just.
After services provided, we could, I can definitely present you some options.
I just really want some of our funds to be used to get.
Yes.
That need that we know is here and we have.
We use the Yes Center and they don't have enough drivers either.
Well, I, I sit on that board, so I was wondering if I could.
If you have a connection for me.
I remember, I have this one thing.
We call them a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Do, do Central Iowa have a car in our area?
So most of our drivers currently go on Cherokee. I feel like, I feel like every driver I use is on a Cherokee.
They do have a couple stationed throughout the, one that I know that Spencer, there's the cars.
Yep, yep, there's, yes. So we use them a lot in mental health transfers because my substance use transfers with that two-hour. Window, they can't sit there and wait. Unless there's another option for it, but then most, you know, that, like I said, most will come on a Cherokee.
I'll talk.
But if there's a local.
It's gotta be a part of what the money is used for is to make sure that our people in need are getting.
Let me work up some options.
Go. So money, we have the money set aside.
Back on the.
Yeah.
Here when you get.
Yeah, let me work out some options.
Figure it out.
See if we can figure some more things out.
So do you want to have a motion before the board today or do you want to wait? I mean, my motion would be contingent, twenty-five thousand contingent on.
Successful.
And we're approving a story check or what?
Yeah, I just don't, I don't, I think we just wait. I, I think we can verbally say. That, that a board comes back with, we approve this building plan for this dollar amount, bring that to this board, thinking we would.
Absolutely.
Could be good.
Thirty-five. And wait, then by that time you'll have talked to Jean and we can work maybe two motions.
We got a couple different things to work out.
Some other things as to what you need to fund it for.
There's definitely funds available. And we can extend that spending authority. To the economy, the increased revenue that we, we should be doing.
No, they're.
We should be, plenty more. There should be another ten to twenty thousand dollars.
We give the sides of it, but we have people in the immediate.
Right.
We don't have a problem.
So Kayla, do you understand what, what we're asking for?
I got you.
Okay, so you'll be back.
Yep, I will be back shortly.
They're gonna take a letter, like, Terry said, they need a letter, but we can definitely.
No. I need that. The hospital's got pretty good faith in this board, so I don't think we need that.
Sense is what the board is.
Don't use that faith just because Dave's.
He hasn't steered me wrong yet.
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 That's right.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming today. It's always an honor to hear from you. Always appreciate hearing.
Absolutely.
Have lots of ideas, so we just gotta get most of them sometimes. So thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a better rest of your day.
You can't miss what my building, what that building is at.
Yes, no, and I invented those words.
What's that?
Yes, thank you.
Before we start the next one, Louise says that, to the best of her recollection, it was about twenty thousand to put the lights that would change color. Uh, and spots here at the.
Yeah, just trim light out all the.
I know, I feel like there's a lesser.
We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Option now. I think there's a lesser. I'm. I'm missed on.
So, well, but I think part of it is.
Getting them installed.
Installed and having that, uh, just little.
Worky work.
Look where my chair ends up every time I stand up. It's just.
Where, where do we go? Did I miss something?
They're having a break.
Okay.
Just a short one.
Anybody drank too much coffee? How are you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. So you changed your name since last, last year.
When have been the last time? Cause I changed my name about three years ago.
Was that?
No, but yeah.
Okay.
It's been.
How long you been coming here?
I've been, I would have only been here many once with the previous name.
Yeah, okay.
Unless you're mixing me up with Kaylee. People that.
No, no, I know, no, no, I, you're the engineer. She's.
Also, okay.
Kaylee.
And her variety isn't, that's yours.
Yeah.
I ran into her occasionally.
Yeah. Yeah, they got married over the summer.
That was this, maybe I am next. Happened to them.
I just can't believe that we can't figure out a way to, uh. Have our folks that have addiction problems in Crawford County better taken care of. Uh, it's, uh.
We have to feel like we got a bad. Well, system, just like Crawford.
And I, I can't believe that.
We have, we have more of our share of crap.
I know.
I mean, I don't know for a better word. I mean, more of our share of, our share of issue.
It just almost feel like we'd be better off with our funds to just. Figure out a way that's not that we have to face and get the any sort of responsibility. Location, that'd be the best way. And I don't have to worry about transportation. I don't know if we could just have.
I'm pretty sure there'd be things to do, but that's also, like she said, reimbursement and funding. That's, I mean, it seems like you just got. One road block after another.
Just can't believe it. That would can't just get some bomb material or something.
Now, we have our share of trouble. We have our share of trouble, but.
Yeah, they're rolling their program.
Is there, is there through their hospital?
The satellite council.
So do we have, are there taxi services in?
I was looking through.
So I just wrote that down. I'm gonna do some research on that, but.
I also forgot that I had a, uh, local assistance report. I went to region twelve on Thursday night to that meeting. I forgot I even did that. I'm telling you.
So you had a forgetful week?
I had a, I went a lot of moving parts this week.
Okay, looks like we're all back. Uh, Kylie's here from, uh, Summit Carbon, so Kylie, coming up? Give us an update. I, I wouldn't expect it to be more than thirty minutes. No, no, okay. Cause I'm sure we might have a few questions from the public. We'll see. Welcome back.
Thank you. Got some handouts for you guys.
Want to keep one? Are they all?
Yep, there's some.
They're clipped together?
Clipped together.
Okay, got it. Maybe one more for Dave.
Oh, that makes sense why I have an extra one.
Wow, when he gets back, he'll.
I was thinking I printed it wrong. So I'm not gonna go through all of them. I'm gonna reference them mostly. What I'm gonna go through is the presentation.
Okay.
Um, shouldn't be too major of an update or too time to have an update.
If we ask questions as we go, or do you want us to wait till the end?
Either way. Uh, so the, the big one, or one of, one of the big ones is earlier this summer. Um, we had a replacement of our executive management team. Um, so we brought in Joe Griffin. And a team that he has previously worked with. So Joe's been in the pipeline industry for about forty years. Um, he has a team that has executed projects, um, operated, um, various companies and, um, pipeline systems. Um, you know, experience in crude oil, natural gas, um, processing plants, H U S pipelines, um. Most different style of pipelines for the various companies, uh, that they managed. So they came in, um, early this summer. And one of the first things they, they sat down, um, with the Summit Carbon team and, and said, let's, let's create mission, vision, vision and values. And let's, let's reformat how, how this company is managing, um, and what we're gonna look like going forward. Um, so we kind of went internal for several months, uh, worked with them. Uh, first I want to know, Joe is. Is really interested in getting out and meeting people and, and hearing their thoughts. Um, there's some supervisors he's already gonna meet with. If you guys have any interest.
I have a question just on this opening statement of his, uh, when he says ensure this project delivers lasting benefits for, like, for generations to come. What is he referring to as the lasting benefits for generations to come? What, what's that mean?
I think he's, he's talking about the ethanol plants. Uh, I think he's talking about the landowners of which the pipeline's gonna be placed.
And how does that help their generations if they torn up our farm ground?
Um, so I, we do have a little bit on that. Um, he expands it a little bit more.
It just seemed like it's an odd statement.
So. What I, what I have, now I mixed my pages up because I didn't like the order of the presentation. I have an old version, but your guys, this is right. Um, the second page, no, that's good. The second page is, uh, Joe and his team are gonna po- I should not say his team. Our team are going to host open houses across Iowa. Um, there'll be one in Dennison on November tenth.
Who are they gonna go over at those open houses? They inviting all people that have signed easements or people that haven't signed easements or just to open to the public?
Um, we're gonna send a letter to all landowners on the project, uh, inviting them. Uh, but it's also gonna be publicized. It's not in the air, telling you guys about it. Anyone can come. Uh, they're there. There's gonna be some structured conversation. Um, it's gonna be kind of, if you've ever been to one of our safety tour meetings, we put boards up and there's different stations. Uh, but there, you'll be there to meet, uh, Joe was our new CEO, uh, Mike, who is our executive vice president of pipeline operations. Our new environmental representative. Uh, so it'll be several of them there, uh, as well as myself and, and some other familiar faces like Kaylee. Um, there to, to be there and answer questions. So it's not gonna be a public forum presentation. Yep, it's Monday night. I think five to seven here in Dennison.
Yep, Crawford Center.
Older, cool.
Older.
Page two.
Um, so we are encouraging as many people to come out, um, and, and meet the new team. And talk to me if you want to, so you guys as well. Uh, so their main goal, right, that we, we rebuilt the vision, vision, mission and values. Uh, I'm not, I'm not gonna go through them in detail because from that, we built out, uh, what we're calling our landowner community, community partnership program. Um, Joe would have mailed you guys this program, but you guys weren't familiar with his name and there's probably a high chance it, it didn't show up at the top of your inbox.
I thought it was just to be having.
Yes, I don't blame you.
We're trained to do that.
I don't blame you. So I actually have both a one-page summary and the full document. That's, I printed out for you guys. Uh, I'm only gonna go through four topics here, uh, but the full document has a, has a, has a lot in it. It talks about. You know, our union partnerships, our, our water use, our environmental stewardship, public safety. It hits on a lot of topics. I'm only gonna hit on four that I think you guys are gonna find the most interesting today, uh, but I gave you the whole document to read through. Um, so first one I'm gonna hit on is easement options, uh. For the landowners. So we previously have only offered an upfront easement. Uh, we, we've heard from the public. Some people want it spread out over multiple years, generally related to tax. Um, so we're, we're not gonna offer three options, still the upfront option. Uh, which is actually paid in, in three buckets, but considered an upfront option. And then there's gonna be a payment over time. So up to ten years, you can spread your payment out, uh, if you're interested in doing that. And then the third option, we hear pretty often. You know, we get a one-time payment and then the investors in the company continue to make money, um, off this project. So you have the ability now to take your payment and invest it, um, in a similar manner to. Uh, when we had an open equity invest, uh, when we went out for equity a couple of years ago. So you invest that money back in and you'll be paid out in a similar manner to, uh, any person that has invested in a project. Um, so it should.
Paid out as a percent of profit or?
Yeah. It's a percent of, so you, you now have a percent ownership on us. It's, it's obviously minor than your shareholder.
Is that transferable?
Um.
For the landowner to transfer to the next generation or the next person that purchases the property?
It's, uh. To the best of my understanding, and I'm definitely not an expert in this, it runs with the land. There, I'd actually guarantee that. It runs with the land.
So the farmer, so I could sell my ground that had a pipeline on it, sell it to Ty and Ty would now receive those payments.
Yes.
The easement would be transferable.
Yes.
So, cause that, that was a. That was a definite dough before.
It was. Yep, this is new with the new team.
So can someone who originally took an upfront payment, can they change?
Unfortunately, that one, no.
Okay.
It's ship to sale.
Yeah.
What about the forty years of experience with Joe? Uh, forty years of experience in the Midwest and Texas?
Um, all over. I know they, they built pipelines up in North Dakota. Um, I think I'm sure they've built pipelines in Texas, Oklahoma. Um, I don't know all the states. I know they spent a lot of time in North Dakota though.
And I know the, you know, rules have obviously changed from state to state dealing with easements and stuff. I mean, and. I mean, this is understanding and be, obviously the first crew would have some conflicts, but pretty wide here. I mean, is this guy, hopefully he's. And they have a federal support with the state and.
From what I've seen, I, I think that's, that they will. Um, so the other half, um, specific to the landowners is we are going to enact a, um, annual payment. For all landowners, uh, once we're in operation for. Every foot of pipeline on their property, it actually starts at twenty-five cents per foot annually. Um, and we wanted to tie it to the successes of the company. So as we have more success in, uh. Voluntary acquisition, that percentage goes up. So it starts at twenty-five cents and then there's thresholds at eighty, eighty percent, ninety percent, a hundred percent.
That's gonna be an additional payment, no matter what type of upfront payment you took.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and that will be for the, the light, the pipeline is operational. Uh, so it goes all the way.
Also was something that was, uh, no.
Yes.
Definite, no.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
So this, this, this is all burned now.
What about for the county?
Yes, for the county, we have that as well. Um, it starts at twelve and a half cents and goes up to twenty-five cents. Um, as we hit thresholds, eighty percent, ninety, about a hundred percent. Um, what's different is the landowners, it's based on the state of Iowa, the county. This may be based on Crawford County. So you guys are already over the eighty percent threshold, very close to the ninety percent threshold. Uh, so the eighty percent, we made it really easy for the people like me to read it off is. Fifteen and three quarters cents, fifteen, six to five cents, uh, per foot in Crawford County. You guys have something like twenty-five miles.
So Jean, did you have something? I saw your.
Oh, I, I did, but then.
Okay, alright.
So if, um, in Crawford County, goals obviously always a hundred percent acquisition, voluntary acquisition, and that would get to twenty-five cents. Uh, per foot of pipe, um, that goes annually to the county. That is above and beyond.
To any other property taxes.
It's, uh, above and beyond property taxes, above and beyond requirements on emergency response, above and beyond grants for emergency responses. It's just. My guess goes to the general fund.
We can always use additional funds.
Speaking of funds, then, how do, how do you guys determine what is, what are property taxes are gonna be?
Um.
I mean, your numbers don't necessarily always jive with other assessors. I don't, we've got brand new assessors, so I have no idea over that. But, I mean, obviously yours aren't always jiving and hopefully this Joe, I think his sincerity and his ability to be talked to by the hard theater. They're, you know, you're absolute know people out here. His ability to win their minds or at least their confidence that what he's saying is honest. Or, but I don't wanna come, I'm not trying to accuse him of being, he's gotta be able to convey to them that I'm, I'm not against you.
Yeah.
I'm trying to run a business here, but I'm not against you.
I think that's, that was coming out with this, um, as he rolled out as the new CEO, the, or the company was, was hoping to say. You know, we're listening to you, we're hearing what the public is saying. Uh. I can't grab my question list, I'm sorry.
Well, I wanna know how you, how you actually determined the property taxes that we're gonna make off the pipeline because it seems a little inflated.
Uh, yeah, so there's a couple ways. Um, obviously before the pipeline's built, uh, state is not gonna assess it. Potentially the state assesses, um, and just determines the property tax.
Be centrally assessed.
Centrally assessed, it's not, yeah, assessed through the county. Um, so is, you can trend other pipelines. You can, you can assume property taxes based on cost of construction. So what does it, cause then we're basically saying what is the value of the asset? And then you can assess it based on the, the value. So you start, when you trend out for several years and your assumptions on what you're gonna pay in property taxes, you use cost of construction. Until you have a centrally assessed dollar. Uh, but when we, we compare it to pipelines like Dakota Access. Um, we're seeing really similar values. The biggest difference in our project and a standard project like Dakota Access. Is the ethanol plants themselves. So the above ground infrastructure that will have at the ethanol plants is a large. Piece of tax. So I'm jumping a little bit ahead, um, but for everyone's knowledge. We put in an amendment to our permit one point O, um, and a big piece of that amendment was adding in the Anderson's plant. Um, as part of the project here in Dennison, uh, so that would change your, your guys' taxes because now we'll have that above ground infrastructure. Um, at the Anderson's plant. Uh, so that is a, when we look at our total, what we're gonna pay in Iowa, a huge chunk of that is because of our above ground infrastructure.
Okay, I got the question, but.
I'll ask this real quickly, it's okay. When you say, uh, based on the cost of construction, does that include all of your upfront costs of the easements and, you know? Cause the whole dollar amount, a lot of that has been used on just what soldiers out there talking to people. Isn't, and trying to get easements, does that go into that whole overall cost or is it just the cost of putting that pipe in the ground?
When the, the value of the pipe itself.
The value of the pipe, but doesn't include how much it costs you to persuade people to sell land they didn't wanna sell?
Not to my understanding, and I'm not a tax person.
I'm not even, if I was, I would have to ask the question, I would know.
Do you know if the state's offered you guys any abatements or any reductions, like, you know, wind turbines, we only get taxed at one thirty?
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent. They, they did anything like that for you guys as well?
Nope.
They love to do that.
They love.
Yeah, they, then they changed it after the nineteenth year, so we couldn't go in and.
No, sorry.
Right.
So Kylie, what other changes?
Um, another change is with survey, um, we are now gonna offer five hundred dollar upfront fee, um. Before, uh, survey on any property. Um, and we obviously still have to follow. As a survey fee.
Or a survey. Amen.
Survey payment, but, but payment for survey. Payment for survey.
What if they don't want you to do the survey? Is there, are they still gonna be faced up to eighteen years in jail or twenty-five hundred thousand dollar fine? If they don't want you to survey, money can't buy some people?
I, I've never heard those numbers before, but, um. I guess we, we still have statutory requirements and, and processes that we follow through that, you see, and I'm not familiar with what you're referencing.
There's an amendment to the Pipeline Safety Act Bill submitted to the US Senate. Um, it said, any law, law, landowner who attempts to prevent the operation or construction of a, a, a type of pipeline is subject to arrest. If convicted, they face up to eighteen years in jail and up to two hundred fifty thousand.
I think, and I, I'm, I'm not familiar specifically with that. I'm obviously familiar with.
What's scary? It's scary.
It is, I, I think comes from, there are, if you look at like the one, the Dakota Access Pipeline was dope. Um, there was a lot of burning of equipment, uh, chain, chaining themselves to dangerous equipment. That's what I see, yes. Stopping pipeline construction. And again, I'm not familiar with that rule, but that is, uh, you know, it's a, it.
Or destruction of your guys' equipment.
Destruction and, and intentional, um, delay from, from protests is fine. And I'm guessing.
It's so broad that it would apply to any landowner who seeks to prevent serving on their property. Period. Old letters. And it was passed, uh, I don't have the date on this. But just kind of.
Out there surveying other private.
To me, it's just when you come and say, hey, we're here, give you five hundred dollars for the survey plan.
Well, but I can just say, like, chain, I doubt they'll chain them so.
That's stealing, man, and that's a whole different thing.
And was that emergency responder? Was that something also that was in addition or was that previous, the fifty thousand?
The fif- the fifty thousand was previous, so it's, it's fifty thousand for every county and then an extra thousand per mile. Um, that is above and beyond the requirements to equip first responders. So this is just a general fund to them to, to spend how they want. In, in any way they want. It's above and beyond the equipment we provide, the training we provide. The tabletops, things like that.
So that's just a one-time payment?
Yep, so that's our, that's our pre-operations grant. And then as we go into operations, we're gonna have a grant program. It hasn't been written out yet.
Or, or EMAs, county EMAs can apply to that grant.
So the first one, we're just handing, um, getting to know everybody and then it's gonna be a grant program.
Oh, got you. Cool. That would be good.
Might be good, it's up there.
Maybe, so then we talk.
Maybe you don't mind. We, we, we digress.
Maybe it won't. Uh, so then, that's the, those are the main four that I hit on, survey, easements, and then landowner payments, county payments. And, um, emergency response funding. Uh, but in, in the document, we also waters a, a huge conversation lately. Uh, in our water use, so our, our new management team, um, there's one, a technical expert. Who is looking at ways to reduce the water footprint. Uh, that includes using air cooling rather than water cooling. Uh, how much do we really need when it's cold outside? How much do we need at nighttime? Uh, in what ways can be. Reuse, uh, obviously based on water purity. Uh, so they're, they're looking, they're putting a huge focus on reducing that water footprint. It's briefly mentioned in the, uh, partnership program, but it's still being worked through.
This was my question for the, the water usage, since you're on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the, the thing that we're getting is you're using water to help ship it through the paintless.
That is incorrect.
Okay, well, and then just going out there, not saying that's what I thought, but the, uh, with now looking Anderson's on, using water here, I mean. At one time, there was gonna be an ethanol plant that they were gonna use the carbon off of that to cool. The coolers in the pack. You can't cool your own equipment with that?
Controlling. CO2 while releasing it's challenging, but it's not, it's not off the table. Um, I would say everything right now is on the table, would be maintained.
Got Elon's number, he needs somebody to help you figure it out.
I'll call him up, see if he answers. It, it is based on, you know, the, the technology has to be there, the capability, other size. Uh, but I do wanna clarify, there is no water in the pipeline. It is pure CO2 going through this pipeline. Um, it's completely dehydrated at the ethanol plant. Uh, you do not want water.
Gee, is that what some people were speculating, that we were sending water up there to help with fracking? In North Dakota.
I think North Dakota has plenty of water.
I'm not, I'm not arguing. I'm just saying that was some of the speculation was going on.
Yeah.
Was that we were gonna be throwing water.
Water is used to hydrotest the pipe.
The water, we will one time before construction starts, um, fill the system in segments, pressurize it for testing, but once that takes place, we'll never.
I remember a lot of that being explained when we went to that. I remember a lot of that being explained when we went to that place, when we went up to the ethanol plant up in Yeah, well, thank you. A lot of them questions were actually asked. And they did talk about that, that's when we actually got to see a piece of pipe.
Water, water will be used in the same manner it's used today at the ethanol plant.
Captured, what they're sending across the highway out here to So you're saying there'd be no additional, maybe a small amount of additional water.
Yeah, because we'll have to cool our compressors.
Can you recycle that?
Yeah, some will be recycled, yeah. Well, you obviously lose some when you, when it gets hot to evaporation. And then the purity of the water determines how much you can recycle. Because as you lose pure CO2, your purity goes down, you should less water for gunk.
So the water, to begin with, you're going to have to put it in big tanks and take it to work, how is that all going to work? Going to do that?
There's unknown at the Anderson's plant, because it's so new. We're just starting those conversations, probably the next month or two, we'll hope to hit on that.
Years ago, we had the conversation, and they were, you know, had proposed big tanks, and they were going to go back down and catch them, remember that?
Hydrotesting?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two different things.
Do it in segments, just thinking, I don't, here again, I'm no expert on this. Fill one segment, hydrotest it, open the valve, push that water to the next segment, close everything. So if you got a million gallons of water in that segment A, you're just going to move to segment B, so not going to reuse another. Right, expert, but it's just, in my mind, that's the way I would do it. Right, I, I think I remember that conversation, that's why similar hydrotest, hydrotesting, it's a different story than your daily usage of water.
These correct me, hydrotest, we're going to move it segment to segment, and it's really going to determine, it's going to depend on how much rain we got that year, and where we get the water from. So that's going to be up to. Yeah, so if it's heavy rain gear, we'll have, we'll have all options available. But if we can pull from rivers, things like that, it's going to be all here, yeah. Other than that shuts it down, give and take in construction. But for the water at the plant, which is what I thought you were originally referencing, specific to the compressors, we'll look at what the, the plant does today, what type of access water they have on their D N R permits today. And, and make plans based off that.
I think, I think Anderson says, well, how much they pull off of.
Somebody that knows that answer.
Yeah, I'm sure I can, we can probably call Dustin or somebody right now.
But, yeah, it would depend on not just what they use, but what type of access they have for us to use. Then I briefly hit it, we are amending our permit, that's, so we received our permit about a year ago. We're amending it for several different reasons, one of the biggest ones is we're adding the Anderson's. The Anderson's requires no new pipe, we already went through the Anderson property, we, we got to run a small line to their equipment. Which is why it ties into our permit, rather than having it be its own standalone permit. It's kind of how Iowa general works. And then on top of that, there's also been best practices changes recently in railroads. So we've made minor changes across the system for railroads, and then we kind of just applied it to major roads. And then, going into Nebraska, we've upsized that pipe. So, our, our system didn't change, but coming off what we call our mainline going into Nebraska, we've upsized to be a twenty-four inch pipeline. Reason of that is we're looking at options to go out west, to head specifically to the D J Basin. Out west, which is a location where you can potentially sequester. You can sequester, they have, they have, they have rights. So it's just giving flexibility on the, on the permit itself, flexibility for us to go whole direction, one direction. As, as we continue with the process and the, the years go by.
Do those amendments, though, involve a new approval, or if they don't approve the new amendments that you put forward?
So you said permit with the state or the federal?
I think, what if they don't want to approve the changes?
I guess that'd be.
So where's the endpoint going to be, since we can't go to South Dakota, that whole thing is changing. Or the whole different project than what we started with.
So, nothing changes in crop, nothing changes at ninety percent of the.
It should, if you have no place to go. Should change if you really don't know where you're going.
I guess, coming off Crawford, it would, it would, everything would head in same direction, same place. It's just, if it heads, we've always had the route in Nebraska, we've always had the route to South Dakota. We were just upsizing the route to Nebraska to allow more CO2 to enter into, into Nebraska, or flow through the pipe, and traverse out to, out west.
Just out west?
To the, to the areas of the D J Basin, which is technically kind of, it's a four corner footprint of.
They're all in their.
Western Nebraska.
No problem, just going to sail right through.
There's, there's a good amount of support for classic, classic permits out there, yeah.
One final question. Do we have to go through Crawford County until we're sure where it's going, can we just kind of halt here, not be out there? I'll ask the neighbors to pit against neighbors, you sign, don't sign, I'll lose money. Can I stop?
I mean, I, I don't think we're pitting neighbors against neighbors, I guess, are you referencing in that we increase? I, I guess, when we were creating this, it was a, let's share in the successes. It's never a, you go out with petition for this, you, this is, that's not something that.
People protect what they, so if the neighbor doesn't sign and they lose money, that's neighbors getting in a little.
And that would definitely not be the, the intent of this, of this, and we'll never ask people to go out and, and do that in any manner.
I don't know if this has been your view. Why is the I U C not more flexible to get around specific line owners? I mean, you guys, I, I asked this question moments ago. But like, when you get, you know, somebody like Tim that says wants to. And this seems like we can't get around it, so we have to use a seven domain stuff, I mean, or the objective is to appeal for him. I just don't, I don't understand why there, the, the inflexibility with I U C. I don't understand their inflexibility about going, all right, let's see if we go around to this next. What, what's, what's, I mean, does that make a bigger problem for you, or does it make a bigger problem for, I can't imagine it does for you, because.
It's the only state that has that type of corridor. But I, I can't, I don't want to blame the I U C, they're also a regulatory body, but they, they're following state law.
Yeah, well, I'm just kind of curious why that is.
You would think if you can go to a completely different state, you could go around a far.
That's my curiosity.
I, I think there is.
It's nothing to do with you guys.
I don't have a great explanation, I mean, the reason they did it, right, the, the thought process at the beginning, I don't know when they put this in place, when they put this places, this allows us to send a letter to everyone and have an informational meeting, and now everybody knows both from the I U C and from the pipeline what's going on. So that was why they set the corridor, I'm sure when they did that, they didn't think of the limitations that it would create. Sometimes that happens. So I think, there's definitely been conversations at the state level on, on changing that too.
Give me some more flexibility.
Because if you could get by without eminent domain.
It'd be already built.
Yeah, we just.
Sure, there'd always be the, the, the safety questions. Because quite frankly, it ain't got anything to do with you, we don't trust what Sims is doing, because they don't know what they're doing. I mean, they, they, they put out that, well, we, we really aren't sure. All of the aspects of that, it sounds like it must be too new.
And they've taken away home rule, so.
Well, that's an offense, but, you know, the safety aspect of it, I mean, I'm not confident that they understand everything to do with what you're doing. You know, so I, I just have a lack of confidence in that, of course, that's, everybody has lack of confidence in the federal government, I think.
I, I will say, and I, most people would agree with you, probably myself, on the concerns of the federal government. You know, Sims has been around for a really long time, the regulations have been around for a really long time. And their, their safety percentages are, are pretty good. Yes, they, they want to make them better, yes, they should make them better. But there's, you know, pipelines, I would say this way you can transport liquids.
Well, I would rather that they, they could do it, rather than us down here at our level, trying to figure out how to keep Crawford County safe, but also, they're not here, they don't have to live here. So, is their concern the same? I would hope so. Simmons is my big question. On safety, yeah. I mean, just sometimes I question your setbacks, I mean, and all that connected things, for various reasons that I've already. Have a well documented supervisor, Rossberg. But, the, I mean, that's, that, the not being able to negotiate around the farm, that's, that's what kind of perplexes me. All right, sorry.
Anything else Kylie that you wanted to bring to us? I mean, I appreciate you with the updates, it's, to me, I guess it's encouraging to see that Summit has made some of those changes that they've made, that they're, they're listening to people that sometimes I think have already signed easements, or wish they could have done it differently. And to people maybe that probably haven't signed easements yet, that if you could structure payments this way, we would be more open to looking at it. So it's encouraging to see Summit making some of those changes, from my perspective, when I saw that, because I didn't think would ever change. I didn't think they, they would make that concession, but they did.
A lot of people, it's not about the money, no matter how and when they pay.
To some of the people, and some of the people, we live in a constitutional republic, so some of the people matter just as much as a lot of the people. That is, that is a point. That I think that you're not the only ones that should have to work. Oh, Harpers figured this out, I think the I U C is going to get on their.
And no domain cannot have.
The only comment I get regarding this update is just doing a quick search of the new CEO, and it's ties to big oil. And, and the footprint that this is, appears to me, just a quick Google search of this, it's frustrating that ethanol, the full focus is on ethanol, saving the ethanol industry. That we are being dictated on how our ethanol industry is going to operate, just a big oil. We were trying to develop ethanol to get away from big oil, and now we're all, hiding in the big one. I mean, that's the, that's the frustration, and all ethanol plants are owned by the oil industry anymore, it's not just Summit, it's.
Well, I would guess, because of Summit's background, that they're trying to help preserve the farmer in the farming industry.
I mean, if we get you can sequester carbon by more than just burying it underground, I mean, we could plant a bunch of trees and have the same effect, but this is what we're dealing with in front of us, we're not dealing with, we're, we're going to buy whole sections of land and plant trees today, we're not.
They won't grow that fast.
No, but I'm not here to, it's just a general comment, it's not, it's just frustrating that big oil has to have.
I, I will say, one of the big reasons the ethanol industry is so interested in this, you know, if they are able to lower their carbon intensity down on that federal scale, it will allow them to tap into. California market, but sustainable aviation fuel. Which is jet fuel, so it's, it's, which is that fifty percent land compared to the ten to fifteen percent for, for cars. So it's, I mean, it's, it's tapping more, it's cutting more out of the big oil. Really is what it's doing.
Very good statement, I mean, the last thing I read, that the prediction on China buying another bushel of soybeans from the U S is highly unlikely currently. So with the soybean market falling apart, we're going to have to use hardcore, more resources, more natural resources, so. As I think we're living at a hundred to a hundred fifty dollar a acre in soybeans this year. No, so, I don't see that being a big player moving forward, so they're going to go to corn. More of us farmers are going to have to corn. So then we just flood the market with corn unless we have. Buy more waves to use core.
Or other base product.
Or other base products, I mean, true, true statement.
Be bringing that up next month.
Most of them all have to do with taking a product and creating. Kylie, did you have anything else?
I did not.
So do any other questions for Kylie, if not, I guess we do have some people I know that are on soon, that maybe want, don't get an opportunity to see Kylie or ask her any questions, so I'll open it up if anyone out there in the public would like to ask a question, that would be that time. Okay, Bonnie?
Hi, I haven't talked to you guys for a long time, like, maybe a year. I just want to, this is a really good discussion this morning, thank you. I just want to point out a couple of things. One, to Jean's point about land, pitting landowners against each other, and Kylie's remark that that wasn't the intent, it's already happening. One of us who has not signed, has already been approached by somebody who did sign, telling them they needed to sign because they were costing them money. So this is, it's starting, and it's, it's really bad. But anyway, just want to let you, let you be aware that that is already happening. And the other big piece is eminent domain, and thank you Ty for bringing that up. Eminent domain is the big thing with us. This project has no public necessity, the CO2 is not going to be used anywhere in the state of Iowa. And for us personally, for my husband and I, it's going, if the pipeline goes through our farm, it's going to be so destructive, because it's a half mile. And in that half mile, they're going to be boring down in six places. Four places to go under a gas line, and two places to go under a road. And we just think that is, is ludicrous to do that, just for a private company to get access, access to our land. And I just wanted that on the record, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thanks for your input, Bonnie, appreciate it. Anybody else? If not, Kylie, thank you for coming, appreciate the update, back anytime.
Yeah, reminder, November tenth, five to seven here. No, I, I do not. And Joe will be happy if you guys show up and.
Yeah, we'll be happy to introduce ourselves soon.
We'll be there.
Since the citizens, as far as asking Kylie, Kylie's gone, but is there any other input that they, you'd like to offer to the board supervisors today? If not, I understand a motion for adjournment. Motion by Kyle, second by Jean, do adjourn. All's in favor, say aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries.